Good evening. My name is Robyn Jankowicz and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NBUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here at the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NBUSD.org/Board. Tonight's meeting is not a formal business meeting, but rather a new type of meeting we conduct twice a year strictly dedicated to celebrating the outstanding work being implemented at our NBUSD schools. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Isidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel? So our Spanish speaking families can hear the instructions.
Certainly. Buenas tardes. La interpretación española está disponible para la reunión virtual de la junta directiva de esta noche. Para acceder a la interpretación desde un computador, haga clic en el icono de interpretación, parece un mundo terráqueo, en la parte inferior de su pantalla desde la aplicación Zoom. En un dispositivo móvil, haga clic en el botón More o más en la parte inferior de su pantalla y elija la interpretación en el idioma dentro de la aplicación Zoom. Este es un canal separado que le permitirá escuchar la traducción de inglés al español simultáneamente. Por favor, tenga en cuenta que los servicios de interpretación no están disponibles cuando se une a nuestra reunión llamando. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant.
Yes, student board member Ben.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser.
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marias is absent. Trustee.
Present.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Or present. Thank you.
Thank you very much Vera. Celebrating our schools' board meetings are a new tradition and practice in the Napa Valley Unified School District in alignment with NBUSD's strategic plan Goal 3, Communication, Community Engagement and Advocacy, and Goal 6, Strategic Impactful Governance. We are in our third year of implementing the new governance practice. Every October and April, we will provide a subset of our schools an opportunity to share and celebrate with the board and public their improvements, their progress, and their accomplishments at the site level as they create excellent educational opportunities for NBUSD students and implement the district's comprehensive strategic plan. Fellow trustees, I ask that we move through the school presentation and save expressions of gratitude for the segment of the agenda, Item C, Comments from the Board Members. We do not want to keep our school teams here too late. We welcome all of our selected schools who will be presenting. Please join me, the superintendent, and the NBUSD School Board in celebrating the amazing work happening in NBUSD. We have been called to order and conducted our attendance roll call. We will go forward with our agenda. We are called to order at 6:04. Trustee Dooley, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
I will, and I'll start with what Principal Flint at Northwood starts with in the morning announcements. Hats and hoods off, hands over hearts, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NBUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. Approval of the agenda, may I please get?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda approved. I would like to invite Principal Pam Perkins to kick us off with a presentation from Willow Elementary Magnet School. Willow Elementary Magnet School is the product of three small elementary schools consolidated into one new school in 2018. Boasting a new facility funded by Measure H, Willow students are motivated to learn through a program that integrates the arts across the curriculum and inspires students to become extraordinary thinkers and the leaders of our future. Welcome, Principal Perkins.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Masetti, Board President Jankowicz, NBUSD School Board members, my colleagues, families, and friends. So first of all, thank you very much for having us here tonight to celebrate the great work that's happening at our schools. I think that, Jordan, you're gonna take care of my presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, start it now.
Okay. So first of all, I just wanted to start out by giving a very quick history of Willow, so you can go to the next slide, Jordan, and how Willow came to be. So in 2010, NBUSD was awarded a three-year magnet grant that included Salvador Elementary School. Salvador was tasked with creating an arts-themed program. And I was actually hired as the principal in the second year of that grant. In 2015, the decision was made to merge two small schools, El Centro and Salvador, that were just one half a mile from each other. And it was decided that the arts magnet would stay and the Salvador principal would lead this project. So in 2016, Measure H construction began and I was the principal at both El Centro and Salvador. In 2017, I was still the principal at two locations and we received another federal grant to support the expansion of the Arts Magnet School. Then in 2018, the new merged school opened with all students on one campus, finally, and was rebranded as Willow Elementary School. And we specifically chose the acronym WE, W-E, to signify unity, bringing those two schools together. Then in 2020, Yountville Elementary School was closed and was also merged with Willow. So next slide, please, Jordan. So Willow uses the Artful Learning Model to deliver instruction to our students. Artful Learning isn't a curriculum, but a framework for instructional delivery. So the framework is experience, inquire, create, reflect. Our teachers have created standards maps looking for connections across the curriculum in order to create inquiry-based interdisciplinary units of study. They use the arts as the motivation so that kids are engaged and excited to learn. So next slide, please, Jordan. So this photo, this photo, I know it's really hard to see, but it represents the units that are delivered TK through fifth grade. So the unit is launched with a masterwork that really kicks off that unit. And then there are inquiry centers based on grade level content standards. So the units wrap up with an original creation and a reflection on their learning. So units are designed to last a trimester. Our team has spent a lot of time working on cross-grade level articulation. And this graphic, in this graphic, you can really see what that does. So it articulates across grade level and by trimester. We've also worked really hard to ensure that all of our masterworks are not created by dead white men, nor are they all visual art pieces. So you can't really see it here, but teachers are using monuments as their masterwork, photography, music, and sculptures. Next slide, please, Jordan. So I've really tried to give you the big picture and what I want us to do is look into the classroom so that we can see a closer example of, this example is a fourth grade unit of study. Go ahead, Jordan.
Each unit of study starts with a masterwork that brings kids in, excites them, it launches that whole unit of study. And then teachers develop inquiry centers so students are able to really think about their own learning and inquire and come up with projects. Make sure those instruments are to the side. Yeah, right in there.
Our unit concept is transformation. And the significant question is how does transformation alter our world? And so like the word, the meaning is a dramatic change in form or appearance. And so as you can see, this is the story of Cinderella. So her dress just got all messed up. And so her fairy godmother changed her into like a brand new dress and that's a change in appearance. Our masterwork experience is "Hodown from Rodeo" by Aaron Copland. And the sea here in Field Chart is right here. Sea is like what the music makes you see and here's like the instruments and stuff and feels what the music makes you feel. It shows a transformation and like the dynamics and pitch and it was like happy, then like sad and then like mellow and cheerful and. This is the Inquiry Center 1. It's about the gold rush and how the gold rush transforms California economy. I'm working in the Inquiry Center 2, Transformational People, and that's what we're gonna be learning about. The people that I'm talking about are Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King Jr. They changed people's life in a whole bunch of different ways. And right here, you can see how we wrote words that we thought described Martin Luther King Jr. Right here. We're learning about transformational people and we're learning about Walt Disney and how the first created character that they made was Oswald the Lucky Rabbit. Where they combined live action with animation. It was something that few movies had ever done.
Everything every day connects back to this concept. Even when we're talking about numbers and mathematics and we're talking about concepts in science, I always take it back to our concept of transformation. So nearly everything we do throughout the day can be woven into the Artful Learning Unit and our Artful Learning Unit reaches out into everything we do as well.
And then right here, the "Oh Susanna" parody by Stephen Foster. And he's like, "I come from Alabama with my banjo on my knee." And then "Oh California" by Jay Nicholas in 1848. He made his own song about California. He says, "I come from Salem City with my wash ball on my knee," which is talking about he's gonna go find the gold. And we wrote our own song about like a whole parody off of "Oh Susanna."
Part of the model is this idea of original creation. So we're pushing the students to create something that has never been created before. It's so powerful to have the kids actually create their own music because that's the true test of, you can see, how they synthesize the information. Instead of just regurgitating something, they take it to the next level and they are actually creating from that information. And that is really exciting. Instead of just reading about the gold rush, we are rewriting a song and students are playing collaboratively. They're performing the song, they're rewriting the lyrics. And so, you know, it's more than just, do you understand what you just read? When it's all all connected around this big concept, not only does it help teachers deliver it in a way that makes more sense, but it also helps kids make meaning out of their learning. And they don't see things as separate. They're able to make connections in their.
Okay, next slide. Thank you, Jordan. So as I've indicated, each unit of study ends with an original creation. And an integral part of our program is the collaboration with our artist partners. So we are currently working with a musician artist partner, the one you saw in the video, as well as performing artists. And this next clip that we're going to look at is a segment from our most current original creation of a third grade unit with the concept of influence. And students were learning about activists and they were learning about the genre of the blues. So they wrote blues songs, created music to accompany it, and then they used tableau to convey the meaning and feelings of their message. So go ahead, Jordan.
Our class chose Charisse Davis because she is one of the first named American woman in the US Congress. We found out that she was also very friendly. She fights for the rights, she helps and inspires people. And she has worked really hard to get to the spot where she is at now. We were very excited that we could actually read her because most of the other activists we study at school are no longer living here. One, two, one, two, three, four. Charisse Davis has a big voice. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. Charisse Davis, she has a big voice. She's one of the first women in the US Congress. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. To protect herself, she learned martial arts through TV. To protect herself, she learned martial arts through TV. Charisse Davis is like a goddess on her pizza. She worked at the White House and innocent people like her. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. She worked at the White House and innocent people like her. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. She decides to run for Congress, she correct reason. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. Charisse has spoken and feared, yes, she's open and tight. Charisse has spoken and feared, yes, she's open and tight. She listens to the people and wants her human rights. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. Charisse is fire to us, to be active and work hard. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. Charisse is fire to us, to be active and work hard. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo. We all deserve to be seen and heard. We all deserve to be seen and heard. We all deserve to be seen and heard. It's our right. Dooby doo, dooby doo, dooby doo.
Thanks, Jordan. Next slide. So here are just some happy faces of our students engaged in piano keyboarding class, drumming, puppet making, other after-school performing arts program, just to name a few of the exciting things that we have going on at Willow. Next slide, please, Jordan. So just like our classroom units start with a concept, we also have a school-wide concept each year. And this year, as we returned with everyone on campus, some of our students for the very first time, we chose the concept of unity. Our significant question that we returned to throughout the year was how can hope empower us to unify and rebuild our Willow community? Our masterwork, The Spring of Hope, has inspired us throughout the year. As a school community, we created and installed a garden of hope with our rock painting project. Next slide, Jordan. So we are driven by the goals of the magnet program. First and foremost, that of desegregation, but we're also working to improve academic achievement, engaging parents, and building community partnerships. Next slide, please, Jordan. So here, I just outlined our Willow goals for the year. Those that align to our board priorities and the goals of our Magnet Schools of America. So achieving one year's growth in one year's time, implementing a targeted intervention program for all who qualify, focus on artful learning with high expectations for all of our students, integrating toolbox into our monthly art plan and daily work, and then continuing to develop our MTSS process. Next slide. So here, I just wanted to very quickly give you an overview of our intervention plan and kind of indicate that these are all the folks that we have delivering intervention. We've really tried to look at who are those available people on campus. So in reading, we are serving 96 students K5 for reading intervention. Next slide, Jordan, please. And then this is our math intervention program. This is outside of the classroom. We've also been working hard to create a plan for teachers to deliver intervention within the context of the classroom as well. Next slide, please, Jordan. So we look really carefully, focusing on, well, we have been focusing on math for the last two years, working with Barb Corner to support teachers on how they can create intervention plans in the classroom rather than just relying on pullout. So so that was sort of that, that plan. This is our star data. We, our most recent February data, looking at the growth of those students that we have been delivering instruction to. We've made some adjustments to our groups to try to increase these results. You'll see a couple of those numbers aren't quite as high as we'd like to see them. But you can also see that we've created action steps for our groups based on the growth that we're seeing as we're tracking their progress. And so this slide here shows our progress in reading. And then the next slide, if you wanna go to the next slide, shows our progress in math. So I have an amazing interventionist and we meet regularly and we're constantly readjusting these. She meets regularly and PLCs with our teachers to look at the growth of our students. Next slide. Finally, I just wanted to wrap up with telling you about some of the things that we're really looking forward to. We're excited to end our year strong. Next month, we're gonna be hosting a drumming group on our campus in May that will include workshops for students, professional development for our teachers, and then culminating the week with a family night. The goal being to bring our families on campus and celebrate our time together. We know that our current fifth graders have not been able to do much in the last couple of years. So we really wanna make this a special time as they leave elementary school. So we're taking all of our students to the current theater to see Harry Potter, The Cursed Child. We're also looking forward to having our very final performance night as an in-person event. And finally, our very first play in two years. So super excited about that. Next slide, please. So really, just as we finish up, I wanted to take a final moment to thank all of you for the opportunity to serve my community in this capacity. I've worked for Napa Valley Unified School District since 1986, retiring at the end of the year. And I just really ask that our district leaders and the next Willow leader can value the work that we've done at Willow and to sustain this amazing program that we've built. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Principal Perkins. We appreciate that. We are moving on to the community of Alta Heights. Alta Heights is excited to share the great work being done to support student learning. The team at Alta Heights meets the needs of all student learners in support of their academic and social emotional development. Alta Heights is a school where rich traditions and history meet new opportunities. Welcome, Principal Ward.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Masetti, NBUSD trustees, President Jankowicz, Vice President Gracia, Trustee Chu, Trustee Water, Trustee Riser, Trustee Gonzales Marias, Trustee Dooley, and our student board members Emily Beatt and Hamena Alvarez Pala. It's my honor tonight to lead our team of presenters from our Alta Heights community in a presentation about the amazing work that's being done every day at our school to support student learning and overall growth. Jordan, if you could queue up the presentation, please. And next slide, please. Thank you. Alta Heights started as a Napa neighborhood school in the post-World War II era. Over the many generations of students who promoted through Alta Heights, there continues to be a legacy of connection and pride in the experience of being an Alta Heights Gator. Our school has a rich history of excellent educators and committed families. I regularly hear from families of our students that both parents and grandparents attended Alta Heights. We now draw students regionally from our valley and beyond. As a Title I school, Alta Heights is unique in its ability to maintain the historic connections that families feel to the school while welcoming new students and their families each generation. Next slide, please, Jordan. If you can see the picture there, hopefully you can see it. That's Kira, Hamena, and Fernanda. Those are three of our second graders. And that's a picture that was in the newspaper on 2/22/22, our Tuesday celebration, that Mrs. Fisher, one of our amazing teachers who's part of our presentation with our team, will be able to reference later, but just wanted to point those three kiddos out and let you know who they are. I mentioned those deep connections to Alta Heights and the history of our school as a transition point to remarkable changes that have been taking place recently. In the last two years, the Alta Heights community has welcomed many members of the Mount George community, both students, staff, and families. This initial challenge has brought about many opportunities. Our teaching staff now has teacher leaders with no less than 14 years of teaching experience. This highly-trained teaching staff at Alta Heights delivers differentiated instruction daily to students. They reflect on student data and they strive to ensure that all students are demonstrating one year's growth in one year's time. Additionally, we are grateful to have received substantial facilities upgrades in the last year, including new roofing, new exterior paint, and new heating and air systems, which we are very grateful for today. These infrastructure improvements have allowed us to keep the focus on student learning and reassure our families. We're also excited to see our enrollment stabilize at Alta Heights. As part of our stabilization efforts, we're thrilled to have our TK program return to Alta Heights for the 2223 school year. Next slide, please, Jordan. So we, I mentioned the challenges of the last two years. This is my first year as a principal of Alta Heights. And last summer was quite an interesting summer for all of us. The COVID policies that have been fluctuating throughout the last two years and affecting us all were still in place in varying degrees, limiting our ability to connect with one another as a community. As I mentioned also, Alta Heights and Mount George communities of students, staff, and families were together last year. However, in the non-traditional school year setup and under COVID regulations that prevented a lot of interaction and coming together. And then last summer, those facilities upgrades that I just heralded also closed our campus for the summer, which really made it challenging for us to come together at that time and me being in my new role as principal to start to bring our community together. So one of the things that we did to try to overcome this was share, use our messaging systems, our parent square messaging and videos to connect with our community. So Jordan, if you wouldn't mind playing the first 30 seconds of this video.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ted Ward and I am the new principal at Alta Heights Elementary School. I am super excited to be a Gator and joining your amazing community. I've already been able to meet many of our staff and continue to meet with staff as we prepare for the school year. And I've been so impressed with all the positive things that people are saying about Alta Heights and about our future. So really excited to be joining this community. I wanted to share this video to briefly introduce myself and share a couple important items.
So thank you, Jordan. So as I go on to share in that video, just information as we're connecting with our families and students to start this current school year. Within those challenges that I just referenced, one of the things as a staff that we all committed to as we started this school year at Alta Heights was the social and emotional support of students transitioning back to full school days. And our teachers were tirelessly to get their classrooms back up and running when school started and provide a safe and welcoming place for our students. And that definitely is something I think we all felt the success of as the school year began. And we continue to see that. And then we looked for opportunities for our staff to come together both inside and outside of school to really grow as one solid staff, one solid unit. Next slide, please. One of the members of our Altites team tonight that will be presenting is Adrian Boudreaux. Adrian is a parent of three students at Alta Heights, fifth grader, second grader, and a kindergartner. And Adrian's also the vice president of our Family Faculty Club, which is our PTA. So Adrian is gonna share a little bit about how our community has been coming together. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So as Ted said, I have three children at Alta Heights this year. We were a Mount George transplant, so moving schools during COVID and everything was challenging. We were a Mount George transplant, so moving schools during COVID and everything was challenging. But we were so excited to come into school this year more like normal, where we could see each other and finally start building those connections with other families. And that's something that I think, you know, as a parent, it's just been so important to have that real bustling school community that we've all missed for so long, not just for our kids, but for parents' sake. And I think that's been shown when we have events, like you can see in these pictures, like movie nights and stuff like that. We've had such an amazing turnout of people coming together and just so happy to see each other and get to know each other. And and one of the things that we really did to kind of get that started was meet not only as a family faculty club, but as a community and find out which traditions were important to us, which events we really valued, whether it was at Alta Heights previously or Mount George previously, and kind of start from scratch. We had a new FFC board that came in. We had a lot of support from our outgoing board that really went above and beyond to try to keep things going even during the pandemic. And so we were able to come up with ideas of things that we really wanted to do or reestablish. So probably the the biggest example I have of that right now is our Gator Garden, which was something that was running at Alta Heights very successfully for a long time before COVID. And Mount George also had a very successful Gator Garden as well. Adam was a special, so students did garden classes once a week. So what we've been trying to do is really get that kind of up and going again. The Gator Garden got a little overgrown in two years of no maintenance. It looked a little like the secret garden. So with a lot of love and a lot of work from our parent community, from our classes, we were able to get it cleaned up and it's pretty much ready to be replanted this year. And we've been able to do that, not just with help from them, but also with our our greater Napa community. Connolly Ranch has provided some really amazing help. The California Native Plant Society has come in and donated a lot of plants for us. So we have all new native garden beds in the Mount George boxes that got moved over. So really bringing all those different components together, all the different people together to make that kind of stuff, special stuff really happen. I think that just kind of going forward, not only with Gator Garden, but with other Alta Heights activities is is getting that kind of hands-on learning for our students as my fifth grader next to me can take advantage of. She has her fifth graders are able to establish two garden beds up by their classrooms that they're taking care of and learning a lot of responsibility and just fun stuff that way as well. So that was about all I had.
Thank you, Adrian. And the picture you see on this slide is a picture from what Adrian referenced, our winter outdoor holiday movie night, which is a new tradition we started this year. It was a partnership with our Family Faculty Club and our ELAC. We sold tamales and had a great time, a great turnout, and we were cold, but we enjoyed the time together. Next slide, please, Jordan. Thank you. So one of the goals that we we had at Alta Heights this school year, after all the changes, was to put the spotlight on our community and really make sure that everyone knew about our school and the opportunities for learning for their child at Alta Heights. And that was in line with our annual board party number five, enhanced communication with all stakeholders. We created a video this fall to be able to share in our community and in our region to let families that were looking for elementary schools know about who we were at Alta Heights. And Jordan, I was hoping you could play the first forty-five seconds of this video, please.
At Alta Heights, we are a community of students, staff, and parents who work together to provide a safe environment so students can maximize their learning. We are incredibly lucky to come to school each day at a beautifully renovated historic campus nestled in the foothills of East Napa. With brand-new upgrades to our campus and a sprawling set of three playgrounds within a large field area, our students have access to amazing natural space where they can explore with their teachers and classmates when participating in our hands-on learning experiences.
I like to think a day in my classroom looks really balanced. I try to create really a love for literature as well as a love for math, but I do like to incorporate.
All right. Thank you, Jordan. And we created this video and we're able to get that out using social media and our website so that families could could see it. And that's been really helpful to us to get our the message of who we are at Alta Heights out in the community. I mentioned social media, Mrs. Fisher, who you're going to hear from in a moment. One of our amazing teachers is also the lead with getting our the happenings at Alta Heights on our Facebook page. And so our families and extended families can see the celebrations for students on a regular basis. And that includes that newspaper article about Tuesday. We send a weekly family newsletter on Parent Square so that our families can stay informed with our English and Spanish-speaking families. Mentioned that our Family Faculty Club and our ELAC, our Spanish-language families, work together regularly on events, including our upcoming May Fiesta. We also send a weekly staff newsletter to make sure all of our staff members know what's coming up the week ahead. And then we start every Monday with Monday morning announcements to set the tone for the week for all of our students on campus. And then we end our week every Friday with our thatigator celebration, which you'll learn more about in a little bit later. Next slide, please. Another important thing to know about Alta Heights and the work we've done this year is we mentioned the coming together of Mount George and Alta Heights communities. And so one of the things we wanted to do was update our Alta Heights mission and vision. And so we went through a process to do that this year. We followed an inter-space process to find our shared values as a staff, as a group of educators, parents, and students. And so in the fall, as a staff, we gathered and shared interests and values together. We also put out surveys to our families in Spanish and English to gather interest from families about what's important to them, about their child's learning. In the winter, we reviewed those interests from all of our stakeholders. And then again, we came together after winter break and organized the interests and values into priorities and narrowed our priorities as a staff. Our school leadership team then drafted a mission and vision and presented it to our staff for feedback this spring. And now we have a final mission and vision, and you can see our updated vision is at Alta Heights. We aspire to develop resilient, empathetic learners with a strong sense of belonging. And the two pictures you see there are one of our monthly pictures of Students of the Month that we recognize and celebrate each month. And then that is one of our amazing teachers, Jessica Rose, being awarded Teacher of the Year nomination recognition from Dana Page. We're excited to celebrate Jessica this year. So lots to celebrate. Next slide, please, Jordan. We put a big focus, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, at the beginning of the school year, on the social emotional wellness of our students and building their skills. And so you can see in the pictures here, Erin, the comfort dog, comes every Thursday morning before school, and students get a chance to start their day with that connection. And it's become a big part of our weekly traditions here at Alta Heights. That's my guy Sebastian eating some food in my office because he earned Student of the Month and chose to eat with the principal. And then that is Emmanuel and Lynn doing an activity during Kindness Month with chalk art. So I want to pass now and introduce to you all, pass it off to Ms. Emily Fisher, who's one of our outstanding teachers. And she's also been a teacher lead for us this year with the implementation of our Toolbox Project. Emily?
Hi, thanks. Um, so at Alta Heights, just like I think every elementary school, we implemented our new social emotional and wellness program called the Toolbox Project this fall. So the program teaches twelve different tools to students. Basically, it's the idea that we already have these tools inside of us that can solve problems in the classroom, challenges on the playground, and hopefully beyond just school. So in the fall, every two weeks, we learned or taught a new tool to our students. And that was really important for us to kind of have the same schedule and have that same common language across the entire school or school-wide. So for every social emotional skill that we were teaching, there was a visual representation of a tool that you would find in a toolbox. So for example, the first tool was our breathing tool, and the icon was a measuring tape. So kids can physically mime pulling that measuring tape out as they're talking about using their breathing tool. And another example is our empathy tool. When we talked about I care for myself and I care for others, the visual icon was the leveling tool. So having the concrete items, I think, especially helped the younger learners just to be able to physically. A lot of us brought in those actual tools, but just having the actual pictures of them, I think, made it more concrete for the littler ones. But across the board, this program's really helped in all areas, not just in the classroom, but outside on the playground. A lot of us even use, as we're reading new stories, we can say, oh, you know, what tool should the character in the story use to help solve this problem? So it's been an incredible program, and I'm excited as we continue to use it.
Thank you, Miss Fisher. Thank you. You'll hear from Miss Fisher again in a moment. Other social emotional focus we've had this year include the second step, lessons that we implement to teach social emotional skill building for handling different situations for our students and and knowing how to address behaviors when they come up, as well as school-wide behavior expectations that we address and work on and practice as a school. I mentioned thatigators each Friday. We celebrate students. They earn thatigators, which are small little tickets throughout the week for demonstrating safe, respectful, responsible, and kind behavior. And then we draw two from each class and call the two students up on Friday mornings. And they get to sign our wall of fame and pick a reward and have their name called on the the loudspeaker. And it's a lot of fun and a great way that we celebrate positive behavior at Alta Heights. We also really try to focus on names. We feel like if students know that we know them by name, then they know they're important. And so we make a point of that here at Alta Heights, and I think our students feel like they're important. They know they're important to our community. And then lastly, just want to mention the the partnership with the Mentis program. We were lucky to have that partnership this year. One in five of our students has had a chance to check in with a Mentis provider this school year. We've had a Mentis provider two days a week on our campus. And with all the social emotional needs coming back to school full-time, that resource has been invaluable to the social emotional health wellbeing of our students and our campus. So we're very grateful for that partnership with Mentis. Next slide, please. All right, now you're good to get to hear from one of our stellar students, fifth grader Akadia, who is Adrian's daughter. Akadia is a standout leader for our Altai Skater community and is one of our student leaders and our student leadership with fourth and fifth grade, and also one of our leaders for Class Buddies. And she's going to tell you a little bit about it. Welcome, Akadia.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Akadia. I'm a student at Alta Heights, and I'm in fifth grade. One of the things we do at Alta Heights is leadership. It's for fourth and fifth grade. And it's really fun. We get to do all sorts of stuff like making posters for Spirit Day, speaking, acting at assemblies, and get, we speak and act, oh, we also participate in jobs. We speak and act at assemblies to give a visual representation for younger kids. Some jobs we do are taking the flag up and down, getting ice from a stabby, like putting it in bags for people who accidentally get hurt on a playground or something, and taking the recess equipment carts in and out. I really like being in leadership because it makes me part of another community. I have a lot of other friends now because of it. And then another thing we do is buddies. We got partnered up with a kid from a lower or higher grade if you're in K through second. And like my classes, buddy classes with Miss Mitchell's first grade class. The buddy that you get buddied up with is your partner for the rest of the year. We do lots of interesting stuff with their buddies, like reading, playing, and doing activities. Actually, like today, we had buddies and we got to do this really fun art thing where we drew, where we used paper and we made like paper Easter eggs. And in conclusion, being a fifth grader at Altai's is actually awesome.
Thank you, Akadia. Well done. And that picture you see on this slide is a picture of our, some of our student leaders who helped organize a fundraising drive for the Humane Society and in over Kindness Month in February. And so when they came to pick up the check, we got a little photo op with a tiny little check there, but they still got it. So that's that photo. Thanks again, Akadia. Well done. Next slide, please. Another focus this school year for us at Alta Heights has been the development of a multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS team. And at Alta Heights, that consists of myself, our parent liaison, the remarkable Irma Delgado, our attendance clerk, Marlene Frost, our amazing interventionist, Dory O'Toole, who you'll hear from here in a moment, our school psychologist, Kelly Hess, and our resource specialist, Ashley Cox. That is our team. We meet every other week. We meet to discuss students that are of concern, students who've been referred to our our team for potential tier two and three intervention support. And that has been an area of growth for us, and there's been fits and starts, and it hasn't been perfect. But we are coming together to make sure we meet the needs of all of our learners. And our teachers have been amazingly patient with our new Ares Intervention Data System that we're using. And that's pause for a quick shout out to Sarah Knox and Peter Booth and Kristin Nelson for leading our sites in the onboarding of this Ares Intervention tab, the pre-referrals that were documenting student student needs in Ares so that we have that system wide in our school district. And it and it's taken us a while to learn how to do that as a school, but we are learning that throughout the school year. And we're finding as an MTSS team that having that centralized data helps us to monitor how students are growing in tier-two interventions and also identify students that may need tier-three referrals for assessment to special education. As we've all gone through at all of our school sites this school year, the challenge of determining whether students need more time or more intervention to to get to grade level if they're struggling. We're going through that process at Alta Heights and through the fits and starts that that sometimes come with it. But I see the progress we're making and really proud of our MTSS team. Next slide, please. Speaking of that team, I want to introduce to you Ms. Dory O'Toole, who is our interventionist this school year. And Dory's going to talk to you a little bit about some of the tier-two interventions that she's been leading for students at Alta Heights. Welcome, Dory.
Thank you and good evening. The first thing I want to say is that it is so exciting to have the privilege to work with these students. They walk in every day and they've got a smile on their face. They're improving and they feel it. And they're ready to go on to next steps so that it's so gratifying to watch them go through that process. Since actually before the beginning of the year, Mr. Ward and I have been meeting and throughout the year, we've been meeting weekly. We work collaboratively and have wanted to design a comprehensive yet pliable program that wouldn't be stagnant, that would be multiple. So we meet weekly and we talk about assessment data. We discuss student growth, scheduling, and also there's a lot of forward thinking that we do, be it talking about next trimester or the next year. Classroom or communication with classroom teachers is essential and has been essential. It's not a take them and take them out and fix them model. We work together and consult with each other. We share each other's information on behalf of the student to go on to what next steps would be for them that was the most. There are two branches of our intervention program. One is focused on second, third grade reading. And the other is third, fourth, and fifth grade math. I am the intervention teacher that is working with the second, third grade teacher. I'm I'm jobs, not job sharing. My job is split between Alta Heights and West Park. So I'm at Alta Heights two to three days a week. We're fortunate to have a retired teacher who taught primary come in once a week. So the students are actually getting that three to four days a week of reading instruction in addition to what they already receive in the classroom. We use the newly purchased Benchmark Intervention Program, which is a phonics-focused program. It does include some comprehension, and I infuse as much of that as possible, which is mildly important. I have one third grade group that's working in the regular grade level benchmark text, and we're working purely on the comprehension strategies. And not only just that, we're working on comprehension in those those deadly story problems in math. So that's been a really good thing for them to see that. So that's been a really good thing for them to see that comprehension goes cross-curricularly. We have a highly qualified instructional aide who is at Alta Heights every day. And she works with third, fourth, and fifth grade students presently. She's using intervention materials from our Bridges Math Program. She has joined me at two district-level interventionist trainings with Pia Hansen, who's from the Math Learning Center and a consultant to the districts for Bridges Program. All right, uses models and strategies and questioning with the students that near what the classroom teachers are doing. And she also consults with the teachers that she is working with, with the kids. So she has gone going assessments as well and she shares this with me and we discuss next steps together. Through all of this, also, Mr. Ward is thoroughly involved in the program. So it really is a three-way and actually more when you have the MTSS team check in. So it's really exciting to see their growth every single day. And what we've seen is that the evidence of our village are working together on their behalf show does show in test scores, but it has also moved to an intrinsic level of I can, as you'll see in the next two videos. You're going to meet first, this young man is a third grader in my comprehension group. And if you can go ahead and play that, I'll speak just a tad about him. So the next day I talked to him and I said, when you said that the more you improve, the more you fit in, what did you mean by that? Tell me more. And he said, well, and he really took time to think and he goes, you know, I always felt like I was at the bottom. And he said, now I can finish my classwork when the others are and I'm understanding it more. And that was just, just couldn't have been said more perfectly. Jordan, if you could switch the slide. Excellent. So this is a fourth grade student. I actually had her during the beginning of the pandemic and a little bit last year. Her confidence was very, very low in her academics and she has something to say about it.
Ms. Blue's been helping me by giving me flashcards and math pages and it's making me feel more confident of doing tests, math tests.
And we share a classroom. So I'm on one, in one corner and she, the Mrs. Blue, our aide is in the other. And there'll be four or five students at her table, literally laying across the table, writing things, looking at things, using the manipulatives. So they're really eating up the math. So it's, it's really, really exciting to see their growth and how much they're enjoying it and seeing it in themselves.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Toole. We appreciate that. And I want to welcome Ms. Fisher back briefly to share about the strong tier-one instruction our teachers are providing in math using Number Corner.
Yeah, so thank you. Number Corner is one of our components of our Bridges Math curriculum. And it's quite amazing for a lot of reasons. The first reason is it follows the classroom calendar. And so it looks familiar in every classroom, in every grade level. So I think having that familiar familiarity, so I say that word right? Really helps with the confidence for the students just to see it and they go, oh yeah, I remember that from last year. I know what I'm going to be asked to do during this next session of my class. Another reason I love Number Corner is all the activities spiral throughout the month. So there's some charts and grids that are updated every single day, but then there's also activities that they just kind of touch on a couple of times a week and then we'll do it again the next week and again the next week. Another thing is that we get to hit so many math standards in this short period of time. So currently for my class, the unit I'm working on is geometry. But for my Number Corner, all of April, we'll be hitting geometry standards, but we'll also be hitting place value and computational fluency. We're working on a number line, doing fractions, and then of course, problem-solving strategies, which is huge. And then kind of the last thing about Number Corner that I love the most is once you kind of, the teacher teaches the concepts for the new month. After the first few days, then the kids take it over. And then it's the kids that are actually doing the talking, doing the teaching, asking math questions, sharing their math strategies. And I was able to move up to a new grade this year and then to see the connections that they've made from kindergarten all the way through the years and that it just completely builds during this quick, you know, 15 to 20-minute Number Corner daily activity has just been really cool. So that's it. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. That was great. And it's a great point to, for me to bring up our partnership with both Pia Hansen, our Bridges Consultant, who's come out here a couple of times this year to work with our staff, and Barb Corner, who has done that as well to just help us with some of this implementation of all the different aspects of our Bridges Math curriculum so we could see the growth that both Ms. Fisher and Ms. O'Toole have referenced. Next slide, please. Next for us at Alta Heights is continuing to work together as a staff to improve our professional learning communities. Now that we have our mission and vision, we know we have to do the work of finding those shared values and we've started that this spring. What do we expect students to learn? What do we do when students aren't learning? And so our staff are beginning to dive into that conversation. And so we are excited about the work to be done to continue to grow our community. That's a group of our first graders on one of our Spirit Days that have got their sports gear on and they are excited. Next slide, please. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you all again for this opportunity to share a little bit about the great people and great work being done at Alta Heights Elementary School. We appreciate all you do to provide us with the tools and resources to create the best possible learning environment for our students. I'd like to end our presentation with how we end every announcement at Alta Heights and represents the enthusiasm we have for our school. Go Gators! You got it, Emily. Go for it. Thank you, everyone.
We are now moving on to Visi Elementary School. Visi is anchored around the six student awards that are given each month to students who exemplify these character traits. These six character traits guide the work of staff and the learning of our students. Our students and staff are excited to share our great Visi Elementary School. Welcome, Principal Zikman.
Good evening and thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Masetti, Board of Trustees, Student Representative, our staff and community members. My name is Sally Zikman and I am the very proud principal of Visi Elementary and I'm excited to have this opportunity to share a little bit about Visi Elementary and some of the success that we've had this year. Jordan, if you could cue the presentation, please. You can go on to the next slide. Thank you. So as President Jankowicz shared, this presentation is anchored in all of the learning traits and character traits that we not only teach our students, we encourage in our students, and we honor through the awards that we give out each month to those students that are really exemplifying each of these different characteristics. We want our students to internalize the traits as part of their learning journey. Next slide, please. So we're going to hear from a couple of my student friends about what it means to be a courageous learner. Go ahead and cue one of the videos.
Being a courageous learner means that you're afraid to let new ideas get into your head or try new things and ask questions.
And from our next student.
Courageous learner is when you're not afraid to ask questions, not to give up, try something new.
Exactly. So our students are encouraged to be courageous learners in that trying new things doesn't have to be scary. And we encourage them to ask questions, be willing to try new strategies, and not to be afraid to make fantastic mistakes. Next slide, please. Perseverance is the next learning trait that we really focus on. We knew that students were going to come to us probably with lots of different levels of learning, especially after our year of COVID. And so we wanted students to know that it might be a little bit hard. It probably would be a little bit hard, but that through perseverance, they were still going to get to their goals. We have students who work together collaboratively to help each other. And through that perseverance and learning, they can in fact reach their goals. These are some just examples of some of our students who are happy to share their learning with us. Next slide, please. So I'm not sure if you'll be able to hear Mahina, but she's going to talk a little bit about what it means to be a persevering student.
Perseverance is when you are in the learning pit and you don't stop and you don't stop trying to learn something that you know or that you think you're bad at and you get it.
So what Mahina's talking about is the learning pit. So Jordan, go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So the learning pit is something that we talk very openly about with our students. And it's that place that you get to when things are hard and when you're first learning something. And you know, we share with our kids that it's okay to be in the pit because you will get out of the pit. When we don't understand something, there are lots of different things that we can do to find our way out of the pit. We can try something new. We can try it again. We can ask for help or have a friend, a teacher, a parent, and we can all make our way out of the pit eventually. Everybody's yet comes at a different time. And so we just encourage our kids to continue through that perseverance so that they can continue in their learning journey. Next slide, please. The next trait that we're going to talk about is to be an inquirer. We want kids to be curious in their learning, to ask questions. So I'm going to again have our students share what it means to be an inquiring student.
An inquirer isn't afraid to learn new things.
An inquirer is someone who asks questions.
And next one.
An inquirer is someone who wonders and is always curious about stuff. They're not afraid to make mistakes.
Yes, so they wonder. They are curious. We want them to investigate and, and challenge themselves to answer questions that they have about their learning, whether it's a new topic, whether it's about characters in the story, but continue to be curious about their learning. Next slide. So all of these different character traits that we just talked about in terms of learning really help our students to grow in their learning. And that has really truly been our focus is on student growth. Our staff knew, like I said, we were going to have kids come in at various different learning levels. And so it was going to be really important for us to really connect with the kids initially and to identify where the needs truly were. Data-driven decision-making has been a cornerstone. We would get together in PLCs. We would take a look at the data that we got in the fall after our first STAR assessments to really determine how we were going to address the needs of all of our kids. It was really important that we incorporate high-impact strategies, everything from think, pair, share, and collaborative work with kids because they learn so much from each other, but questioning and feedback. And then we've also done some work in looking at teacher clarity and understanding what it means to be clear about what it is you are teaching as a teacher. We still have a lot of work to do in that area, but we're making progress in that. And so as the teachers have more clarity around what they are teaching and what skills and knowledge that their students need to know, our students are also gaining in that clarity around what their learning is. So when they're asked, what are you learning today? They don't shrug their shoulders and not say, not be able to tell you. We want them to be able to share that they are learning a certain thing or where they are in their learning path. And so like I said, we have some work to do there, but it's, it's really been great to see the progress that we've made in that. Another thing that we tried this year was learning sprints. I worked with a group of elementary teachers this fall in identifying, or actually it was last year, about learning sprints and what that looked like. And so our staff embraced that idea. And the, and the concept is that you focus on one specific skill for a short period of time and that you take time every day to focus on that particular skill. And we really saw great gains just from doing that simple little change. And it gave our teachers the freedom to say, I can really focus on this, whether it was math facts or sight words or whatever it was for each grade level that they determined they wanted that learning sprint to be. And so by looking at that pre and post-assessment data with that learning sprint, it just gave them the freedom to say, oh, this is something that I can incorporate into my, into my classroom instruction. The other thing that we decided to do was a school-wide learning academy. We have needs at every grade level, in every learning level. And so one of the ways for us to try to address the intervention in addition to the couple of days of intervention that we have with an intervention teacher was really to look at our school as a whole and what were the needs of our students. So again, we looked to the data and we wanted to, but from that data, we determined that our focus needed to be in reading. Our students were, you know, needing support in math as well, but our teachers felt like they could differentiate within the classroom with Number Corner and some of the strategies built into the Bridges curriculum. But that reading was going to be something that we needed to focus on whole school. So the grade level teams got together and we determined that we could, you know, create groups of students that were in similar areas of need. And we leveled the school and we carved out some time, three days a week, in order to be able to give a solid, you know, three days a week, 30 minutes of instruction around a particular set of skills that the kids needed to work on. And so if it's some of our students who still needed help with, you know, vowel sounds and short, short vowel sound words, or even just basic phonics instruction, or some of our students that were struggling with fluency or, or comprehension. So we were able to really target the specific need of that group of students. And it was interesting, I was listening to Ted's presentation and when Dory was talking about how the kids said they fit in, we got very similar feedback from the students that were in those leveled groups that they felt like they were with everybody that was just like them. And it was really powerful and impactful for them to feel the confidence to try and not to feel like they were embarrassed to participate in that learning. And so it really, it really paid off with big dividends. So we were excited to dip our toe in the water with something very new and different for us, but we felt like it was a big success. Next slide, please. So to share with you some of that success, this is our fall, excuse me, this is our winter STAR assessment data. And so we had 69% of our students who actually met that at or above reading proficiency level in the winter month of January, February, when we came back from winter break. And that was for our second through fifth grade students. Next slide, please. But I really wanted to point out that was not just that we had a high percentage of proficiency, but that we did in fact see the growth in students' performance. So in the fall, when we had 62% of our students who were at that, at or above proficiency level, when we retested those and did give those assessments in the winter, we had 71% of our students who had in fact made that, that growth to that at or above proficiency. And where we had 25% that were in that intervention or urgent intervention level, we reduced that to 15%. So we are seeing growth through all of the combined efforts of the instructional strategies, the, the learning academy, and the learning sprint model. Next slide. And so in math, we had similar kinds of experience. We had in the, in the winter quarter where we, we did our assessment, we had almost 80% of our students. we had almost eighty percent of our students hit that proficiency level of at or above, which we were really excited to see. Um, next slide. But again, I wanted to point out the growth. So we had seventy percent of students who in the fall were showing that at or above proficiency level. But then when we, we reassessed in, in the winter, we had eighty percent of our students who were in fact meeting that at or above proficiency level. So we're, we're seeing the growth through again, all of the different strategies that we're using. The, the learning sprint was one of the things that we focused on with math in, in addition to the number corner um strategies and making sure that our, our staff is uh with fidelity doing number corner. The learning sprint really did have an impact, I think, in our math scores. Next slide please. So as I move from the um, the learning um uh model to more of the character building that we're talking about, we're going to hear from one of our students who uh wants to share what it means to have uh integrity as a student.
To have integrity means to do the right thing when nobody's watching and to be stay truthful.
So we do talk to students about that. It's hard to tell the truth, but it's really important to tell the truth. And so having integrity is not just doing the right thing, but doing the right thing because, but because it's the right thing to do. And, and to be honest, um, students with integrity are students who know um that people can trust them, they are honest, and they take responsibility for their actions. And we're really trying to build that sense of responsibility from each and every one of our students. Next slide please. So um, as you heard from, from Ted and Emily, we um incorporated um second step, which is a program that we have embraced and have been using now for some time around that empathy learning and situational understanding of what do I do in it when this is happening? And really trying to build the capacity of our students to problem solve. The toolbox, the toolbox project that was um adopted this year just gave them more language around the tools that they could use in any given situation. And I think that the, the combined effort of those two programs and sort of the merging of using them in coherence with each other has really helped to build the social emotional capacity of our students. You know, we still have work to do. We have, you know, playground rule roundabouts where kids are learning about playground rules several times throughout the year because we want to make sure we know that, you know, there's an uptick in the spring with behaviors. We know in the beginning of the year, they're having to learn it all over again when they come back from winter break. So we, we build those times in to make sure that we're re-teaching throughout the year. I was really excited to have our maintenance department. Thank you, maintenance department for um coming out to provide me with the stencils for the um peace path. I love using this. We have it in both our primary and in our upper grade playground. And our students have been taught how to use this to problem solve with um another student. And um, or we will walk them through the process, um, one of either yard duty or, or myself or their teacher to help them have those conversations that are difficult to have. And oftentimes, it's just because there's a lack of communication. Um, the other thing that I'd like to say is that we use community circles as one of the things that we do as a hallmark in, in our site. We, we did receive um training in the past from Karen Younger, and we really felt like it was going to be important to re-establish that community this year. So in the beginning of the year, my message was go slow to go fast. We really need to just establish what it's like to be in a classroom of kids. Uh, many of our students hadn't come to school before uh in the last year and a half. Some of them did, but it was in a very small environment with just a few students. So to be in a full classroom full of kids, learning to collaborate, learning how to communicate was going to be really important. So the use of community circles and dedicating the time for that was going to be really important. And all of the uh, the character development comes with our Viking pledge. And we say it every day after we do the pledge of allegiance through our loudspeaker. All the kids are standing, raising the writing he- right hand and repeating that pledge to be kind, respectful, responsible and safe. Next slide. So we are going to hear from one of our students about what it means to be responsible.
Being responsible means to do your, to do your homework and have your school stuff ready.
So we're teaching kids to be responsible, not only for their stuff, right, their jackets and backpacks and things like that, but also to be responsible for their learning, to come ready to school with their supplies, with their homework, to have the mindset to be ready to learn, to um engage in their learning and to be responsible for asking questions and collaborating with their classmates. And I think it's important that they understand that responsibility has so many different ways to, to be established for them as learners. So it's not just about your jacket and your backpack, but really what are you doing to be a responsible learner as well? Next slide. Citizenship is something that we take uh very seriously and we really promote at our site. Um, I have um a group of kids that have volunteered to be my recycle rangers. Um, I, they're clamoring. Matter of fact, I now have to create a schedule because I have so many of them that want to help in keeping our campus clean. Um, we have students who are mentoring with other students in reading. We have um students, I had asked some of my older students to go to the playground and help some of my younger students learn how to play a game so that they could play it safe and know the rules. They were so willing to give their time from their recess to be able to do that. Um, it truly was, was, was a great experience. Um, we um did Operation With Love From Home this year where students made cards and wrote letters and drew pictures as well as creating, you know, getting some donations to support our troops. Uh, we have kindness month in February. We had students collaborate together to create kindness posters about things that they could do to show kindness to one another. And so again, we're continuing to build um the character of what it means to be a part of a community through citizenship. Next slide. So part of that citizenship comes from our student leadership team. Um, we are going to hear from a couple of students about what it means to be in the student leadership.
I really like student leadership because we get to work with the younger kids that are in kindergarten, first and second grade.
And from our other student.
I love the student leadership because you get to be a part of such fun people and a lot of my friends are in it too. Um, it's also nice to know that you're helping your community and your school with all sorts of things like the food drive.
So our student leaders are led by um teachers, uh volunteers. They give their time and um meet with the kids. They decide on spirit days, they create posters, but they also do um support with um helping other um teachers that are in the kindergarten, first and second grade. As they said, we do have funny classrooms, but leadership is, is goes beyond that. They help with um kids with reading or they're going into, to just support out on the playground to help kids to interact in an appropriate way. Um, the other pictures that you see here, uh, one of the big things that our student leadership does is we um have a giving tree and we partner with our Queen of the Valley Foundation to adopt families in the wintertime. And our parents have been extr- extremely generous with food and gifts and our kids wrap them and sort the food and then, you know, take time to deliver um to the families. It's one of the favorite days of the year for the staff and for the kids that participate in this. Um, to, it, it's really great to hear the expressions of the kids that say, this was just such a wonderful thing. It was so nice to see the smiles. And so um, again, it's building that sense of community outside of our own community. Next slide please. And building community within our school was also really important this year, as I mentioned earlier. And so um, we decided with the help of uh parents kind of on the backside of things, they were sort of behind the scenes. Um, but we um were able to pull off a jog-a-thon this year and uh without the parent volunteers on, on the campus. And so we had to do it a little differently. Our students partnered again in triad. So we had our older students with our middle grade students and our kindergarten and first grade students and they all got in, in one little group. And they were responsible for tracking laps and holding water bottles and cheering each other on. And it, and it was truly a great event. We actually uh had a, a pictures in the Napa Valley Register for this particular jog-a-thon. Um, and it was just a wonderful way for our community to come together. Um, we have a, an art contest to create the um t-shirts um that the students wear. Um, they also, they can submit a drawing and then it's voted on by the staff. And eventually um then it gets printed on the t-shirts and uh that's something that they then can wear on their spirit days um that we have on Friday and they do proudly wear those. And so our um, our um theme this year was stronger together, similarly to our Napa Valley Unified District um theme this year as well. Next slide. And another way that we um had a, a great community building opportunity. Again, this was with teachers and kids. Um, we had a garden uh li- like Alta Heights that had kind of gotten overgrown and was uh looking a little um worse for wear, but um we took the opportunity to create a pumpkin patch um right in our very own garden. Um, our teachers took on the, the challenge and each classroom was able to um make a scarecrow and design it and stuff it and fill it. And then we had pumpkins delivered and our teachers took time to get the scarecrows put up, put all the pumpkins out. And so the next day, kids got to vote on their favorite scarecrow and they all walked home with a pumpkin. Um, and it truly um was a great community um event for the kids. They really had a great time. Um, we did Halloween a little differently this year, but it was really something. I think that, that um everybody was like, I think we should do this again because it was really, really fun. So um another opportunity for us to build community at our school. Next slide. So when we go outside of the walls of school, right, we want to try to incorporate the community um outside of our, our four walls. So um, this year, um because we were restricted at least for a little while, we didn't have very many people on campus, but when it came to Read Across America Week, we were able to invite um community members to come to read with our kids. So we were fortunate that we got some of our NVUSD staff to come. Um, Assistant Sue, uh Pat Andrew Jennings came, Sarah Knox came, uh Matt Manning came. I had Tracy Weiss here. Um, I'm trying to remember who all came. I think I had Gloria came from, from maintenance. Um, Elizabeth came from HR. So we had representation from many di- different departments. In addition to that, we had our local Cal Fire Station send over three um staff members who came with their fire truck and they all each went to classrooms. Um, we were able to get um the um librarian from the Napa County Library to come. Um, one of our former parents who's an author came to and spoke to some of our upgrades as well as reading story and sharing their love of reading. Uh, we've also had um our CHP, local CHP, do a bike helmet giveaway, which was really neat. Um, and most recently, and I, I apologize, I don't have a picture. Um, but um just last week, we had an assembly for women in history. And we were able to get the vice mayor, city council member, uh county sheriff, um, the um Cal, Cal Fire Chief Administrator and the deputy district attorney, all women to come and speak to our kids. And um it truly was a neat experience to have those women share their stories, share their history of well, how they got to where they were and it, and be an inspiration to all of our students at our site. Next slide. We can't do this without our parents. Um, we um appreciate so much all of the work that they have done this year behind the scenes. Uh, we are excited to be coming back to a more normal uh environment where we have parent volunteers coming onto campus. Um, and so they've come to um do science experiments or read with kids in small groups or um, you know, copy machine, if that's what it means, you know, just any support that we can provide to um teachers and to kids. We even had the Tooth Fairy come, which was really fun. She came to our kindergarten to talk about uh dental health. Um, and I'm really excited to share. I have a, a, a great dad who has been volunteering as noon duty supervisor for the entire year. I couldn't do what I do every day without him. Uh, we are both out there every day um supervising student behavior and, and making sure they're playing and playing fair. And it's been great to have the his male presence on our campus every day. And so um again, I was, I'm very, very um blessed to have that. Um, in addition, I'm super proud of the fact that we now have an ELAC. We were the last elementary school, I think, to have one. We established that um last year and have continued to have representation um at the DLEC um committee meetings. And I'm just um glad that we can embrace our entire Bishi Elementary Community with um the parent's support through ELAC and DLEC as well. Next slide. So it takes all of us. It takes the village. I want to thank the board and all of the um support that I get from our elementary and um NVUSD colleagues. As we navigate our learning together, the parents, the um, the community, our teachers are dynamite and I give everything they have every day to make sure that our students can be courageous learners, can be good citizens and be kind. So thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Principal Suckman. I appreciate it. We are moving on to Harvest Middle School. Harvest Middle School is honored to have the opportunity to present to the NVUSD Board of Education and the community the wonderful work that takes place on campus. The presentation will include Harvest history with regard to programming, assessment model and school-wide student goals. Presenters will share highlights of past and current, current student experiences within the school-wide academic offerings, dual immersion ISA programs, avid and avid Excel courses and influences of PBIS strategies key in building a positive climate and culture for all students and staff at Harvest. The Wellness Center and MTSS services will also be featured in the presentation. Well, welcome Principal Franco.
Good evening and Dr. Mercedes, NVUSD Board of Trustees, Student Board Members, colleagues and community guests. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate Harvest Middle School. My team this evening includes Mr. Osborne, Assistant Principal, Sarah Berry, Harvest Social Worker, Debbie Anderson, Harvest Counselor and Harvest eighth grade students, Henry R. Pearson, Ines Carlin, Jasmine Muñoz and Yerida Torres Gonzalez. Jordan, if you can please queue up our presentation. Next slide please. I will begin with a brief history. Harvest Middle School proudly opened its doors to its first group of six through eighth graders on August twentieth, two thousand and three. An enthusiastic and dedicated collaboration of district staff, teachers, administrators and construction crews came together to revive and renovate the former Ridgeway Campus. Harvest became the first and only dual immersion middle school in Napa and has been integral in strengthening the continuum of the International Spanish Academy Program for NVUSD. In two thousand and thirteen, Harvest was awarded a one million dollar federal Magnus School Assistance Program Grant which allowed our school, over the course of the initial three years, the unique opportunity and significant funding to transform Harvest into an officially authorized international baccalaureate world school. This was a rigorous, revolutionary school-wide change and it was incredible and awe-inspiring to see an entire school community commit to teaching and learning with big interconnected concepts, collaborating on detailed and authentic units of study, focusing on character building and building learning and, and putting learning into action. The IB Magnus School Years Program brought balance and diversity to the Harvest community with the goal to provide equitable access to high-quality instruction and programs for all students. The Harvest app continues to be dedicated to serving the student body at Harvest with key components of the IB program that we know are essential for academic and social emotional success as students prepare for their transition and new academic journey and the twenty-two, twenty-three academic school year. Next slide please. Although the IB middle years experience has changed over the last three years, we continue to engage our students academically through the lens of the core values of the Magnus School Program and global context of IB. It was a must-do for the twenty-one, twenty-two academic school year despite the, despite facing the challenges of student enrollment within the district, leading to the Harvest School closure. It was important to us as a community of educators at Harvest to continue to provide our students with the best version of ourselves and do our best to sustain a student-centered learning environment. Our must-dos for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year include the following. Students have one or more teachers who know them well. They feel welcome, safe and a part of the school community. No teachers have high expectations for them and believe in their success. Know what success looks like and the steps to get there. And students are in classes and feel like teams and celebrate each other's successes. Next slide please.
Hello, Meshak Osborne, Assistant Principal at Harvest Middle School. This year, as in past years, Harvest Academ- This year, as in past years, Harvest academics include core content classes. And although the electives are limited this year, you can see we have a variety of classes in place. They include leadership, exploratory art and design, band, exploratory music. Garden culinary class, exploratory design and engineering, English language development for second language learners. And advancement via individual determination known as Avid in eighth grade. And the Avid Excel curriculum is embedded in the five. English language development classes to support student mastery of the English language in reading, writing, speaking and listening. In previous years, Harvest elective offerings included journalism, animation, dance, additional Avid classes. Weight training, choir, drama and strings. This year, Harvest serves dual immersion students in seventh and eighth grade. Who are also part of the International Spanish Academy. Known as ESA. The student skills and direct studies are courses provided by special education for students with IEPs. All students this year have and will continue to experience social emotional curriculum using this. District Adopted Program, Second Step and Response to Intervention every Wednesday. We thank our wellness team for supporting us in planning and the scheduling of this important work. Next slide, please.
Our grading practices at Harvest follows a rubric grading model known as standard space grading. Standard space grading means students' grades are based on how well students master the knowledge and skills in each content area. Student grades look like a GPA rather than percentage points. During each unit, students keep track of how well they are learning each standard. And they get specific help and feedback to get better and better along the way using a rubric to monitor their progress from beginning to end. The Rubik outlines learning criteria and success criteria that describe and make the learning visible for students. You will hear students say formative assessment. It means a student's final grade is still forming. These assessments include frequent, ongoing practice assignments and or assessments that are en route to mastery. You will also hear students say summative assessment. This is the sum of what you know about the standard. It is a final grade for the unit. We thank, we are thankful for the IB program for this equity-based grading practice and are excited that NVUSD began exploring grading with equity with Joe Feldman. Now, Henry McPherson, eighth grade student, will talk about our dual immersion in our ESA program. Next slide, please. Henry, are you there?
Do you like me to read for him?
No, he needs to unmute.
Oh, okay, he's here.
Welcome, Henry. We can see you. Yes, you can hear you, Henry. You might want to put up your volume a little bit. You want to get a little closer, Henry? We can't hear you.
Jordan, is it? Mr. Michaels, I mean, is this a tech difficulty or on our end?
No, he's he's unmuted. I don't know if it's a device issue.
Henry, we're just having trouble hearing you. Do you have your sound all the way up your volume? Maybe that's it. We can barely hear your kid. It's okay. It's a little better.
Principal Franco, we can't hear him at all.
You can't hear him at all?
No, not at all. Do you want to go ahead and take the slide?
Yes, I will go ahead and take the slide for him.
You want to read to me?
Henry's prepared. It says. Currently, Harvest serves seventh and eighth grade students in the dual immersion program. The language model at the middle school level increases the cognitive demand in both Spanish and English. We spend about 30% of our time increasing academic and content vocabulary in Spanish and about 70% of our time increasing. Academic and content vocabulary in English. That way, we remain fluent and continue to level up in both languages. Dual immersion students take a Spanish language arts course. Just like in English language arts, we are increasing our skills in reading, writing, speaking and listening in the Spanish language. We also take a social studies course taught entirely in Spanish so we can apply what we learned on a daily basis in a content setting. Next slide, please. Henry also prepared the following. Harvest Middle School values multicultural education. The ESA program offers students the opportunity to recognize the value and importance of the Spanish language and to develop as bilingual and bicultural students. It is a great program to encourage the celebration of cultural and linguistic differences. ESA is a program that helps spread the appreciation for being bilingual in English and Spanish. The ESA program helps students take pride in being able to communicate in more than one language. It has helped many of our native Spanish speakers grow in their native language. It has opened other doors for our students who are learning Spanish as a second language. The students who participate in the ESA program. Develop important cognitive skills like problem solving, logic, critical thinking and creativity. Students feel more confident in their learning. These are some quotes from students from the ESA program at Harvest, I quote and unquote. The ESA program will help me get a better job in the future. I have the opportunity to speak to people from Spanish-speaking countries. The ESA program will help me to have better opportunities in life. Being in the ESA program is a privilege because not everyone can speak two languages. I can, and that makes me proud. The ESA program helps me by having better communication with family members here and in Mexico. The ESA program helps me by being one step ahead of other students academically. The ESA program has helped me learn how to speak, write and read better in Spanish. Because of the ESA program, I am learning other cultures, traditions and languages. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, we participated in the contest Escrivel en Español to the Embassy of Spain and I won mention of honor. And personally for Henry, he says that the ESA program has helped me be able to communicate with people in my community. Next, we have Jasmine and Inez, who will now talk about the Avid program at Harvest. Next slide, please.
Good evening. My name's Inez Carlin. The Avid elective is the core of Avid Secondary. It targets students in the academic middle with the desire to go to college and the willingness to work hard. Often, the Avid elective students will be first that will be the first in their families to attend college. And come from groups traditionally unrepresented in higher education. These are students who are capable of completing a challenging curriculum with the support of the Avid elective class. The Avid elective class places these students on the college track work. College track requiring students to enroll in the most challenging courses that are appropriate for them, such as honors, advanced placements in high school. To support them in the challenging coursework, avid students learn organizational and study skills. Develop critical thinking, learn to ask probing questions, receive academic help from peers and college tutors. And participate in enrichment and motivational activities to make their college dreams a reality. Jasmine, can you please continue?
Hi, my name is Jasmine. I'm in eighth grade and I'm an avid student. And at Harvest, although it's our last year as a community of learners. It was and is important to the teachers and administrators that they provide all students, not just the avid elective students with essential key strategies. That will prepare us with strong foundation for learning as they also prepares for a school closure this year. Every other Wednesday, we check to make sure that we all have necessary supplies. Also that our backpacks are clean and our planners are filled in. Additionally, we learned last Wednesday about academic language scripts to help us ask questions appropriately and to disagree respectfully. Next slide. In both Avid and Avid Excel, there are team building activities, curriculum support and fun. A few of the strategies that we learned through Avid and Avid Excel are. Avid Islands in the top right-hand corner, tutorials in the bottom left-hand corner. Virtual field trips to Sacramento State University, bottom middle picture. And career research project and presentation, bottom right-hand picture. Next slide will be Yadira Torres.
Hi, I will be talking about my experience here at Harvest. My experience here at Harvest has been a key element in my life from being a kid to a mature teen. Harvest has helped me with so much preparing me for high school as well as helping me grow with the Napa community and relationships with my classmates. Harvest Middle School has given me the opportunities in life I didn't know I needed. Some of them being giving me the chance to show I know and grow. Also, Harvest staff gives us lots of love and support whenever others or I need it. Especially Harvest helped us build amazing memories that I will cherish for the rest of my life. Because of Harvest, I will go every day with a smile on my face and a story to tell. Next slide, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah Berry and I'm a school social worker. The Harvest Wellness Center started on the Harvest site back in 2016. One of the first wellness centers to open its doors in the district. The Wellness Center bridges together academic, social, emotional and physical wellbeing to serve the whole student. We have an amazing staff working in the Harvest Wellness Center that includes both our school counselors, the school psychologist, wellness special ed clerk, parent liaison, school nurse, social worker and an intern psychologist. Who are all available to support our students academically and socially emotionally. They're also of great support to our families, staff and administration. Working with the district and outside agencies, the team identifies resources for students and families and provides a safe place for students to visit when they need additional support. Counselors also support staff with social emotional lessons using the Second Step Program. Creating a schedule that supports teachers and delivering a lesson each week by department to ensure students receive the full 27 lessons by year end. These lessons support our students throughout the school day to become lifelong learners. Next slide, please. Our Harvest MTSS team is composed of the wellness team, again, our counselors, psychologists, social worker and nurse. As well as the admin team and a classroom teacher. The MTSS team meets weekly and regularly reviews data and student needs. We then work to connect identified students to supports that best meet their needs. Through the arduous work of the MTSS team, we've connected students and their families with supports and services offered by community groups such as Mentis. Aldeia, Mariposa and Burnett Services, as well as onsite tutoring, mentoring and counseling groups provided by staff. Back in 2016, before the district's adoption of MTSS as a district-wide model. The Harvest Wellness Team, along with Northwood Elementary, volunteered to be the first schools to pilot the MTSS model. Through this early MTSS work at the Harvest site came many of the district adopted MTSS materials and templates now used district-wide. We're proud of the work done through our MTSS. Thank you. Next slide.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Anderson and I am a school counselor. For the 202122 school year, Harvest brought a renewed focus on building a positive climate and culture for all students, families and staff. As part of this work, we focused on our three core values along with the Harvest profile traits. They are be safe, be respectful and be responsible. We discussed what these behaviors look like, sound like and feel like when on campus within the HMS community. Returning to school after a year and a half of distance learning, it was important for our staff and students to get reacquainted with the campus. One another and understand what it means to be a student again. We worked together to experience our core values and school-wide expectations both inside and outside of the classroom. Next slide, please. Students work daily to demonstrate the Harvest core values at school throughout the day. Students earn Hawkeyes in recognition of their positive behaviors and for embracing our values. It can be seen exchanging their Hawkeyes for prizes, special privileges and other things in our hawk store. It is important that they are acknowledged for being positive citizens in the community and in their personal lives. Next slide, please.
I also want to highlight ACE. Harvest has benefited and continues to benefit from the ACE program. It has been a strong support of our school community, working closely with administration and teachers to ensure students and families access a safe. And affordable childcare program. Many of our students access the ACE program in the AM as well as PM. They provide our students with a wide variety of fun experiences, including access to a variety of sports. Our students enjoy the variety of fun. Next slide, please.
Well, as we come to the end of our presentation, I want to take a moment to highlight the Harvest teachers. Several have been at Harvest since the day Harvest opened its doors to the community. Others joined midway and we have new faces that have embodied the culture and climate of the Harvest community this year. Despite the many challenges that have come their way, they continue to move the needle with student academic achievement. I want to thank them on behalf of the Harvest community for their hard work over the years. I also want to take a minute to show you a Kindness Week video put together by Jessica DeGuevaria, our counselor. And MTSS lead that captures a glimpse of our school body, student body and staff on the Harvest campus. Thank you, Jordan. And lastly, a special thank you and acknowledgement to Mr. Osborne for leaving his post at Redwood and jumping into the role of Assistant Principal in early September. The training was brief and he continues to learn and grow each and every day. Thank you, Mr. Osborne, for reminding us of the importance to laugh if I enjoyed our work each and every day. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Ms. Franco. I appreciate it. Another group of amazing people at Harvest are our classified staff and parents. We want to thank our janitors, campus supervisor, library technician, teacher aides and our kitchen crew for showing up every day with a smile. We are greatly appreciative of the Harvest office staff for their willingness to jump into new roles this year and take on additional tasks. To ensure that the daily operations of the school community continue to run smoothly. Lastly, we want to acknowledge our Parent Faculty Club and ELAC Committee. Over the years, they have worked with the administration and teachers to support our school program and activities. They have organized and brought our parents together, supporting all students. We can't thank them enough for all their support. Next slide, please.
We would like to also give a special thank you and acknowledgement to our community supporters. As you can see by looking at the screen, we have had many community programs impact our school community. Many families have benefited from their services and we thank them for their continued support. And it doesn't stop here. Next slide, please. The next list shows you that it keeps going. Thank you to our dining and donate fund readers or supporters. Their generous donations brought joy into the learning on our campus. Next slide, please. And although Harvest will close its doors on June 16th of 2022, the students, their families and staff will carry on.
and staff will carry on the legacy and memories of Harvest to their new school site and beyond Napa Valley Unified School District. We have this saying at Harvest Middle School, "My team, are you ready? unmute." Let's say it together. One, two, three. Once a hawk... We look forward to continuing to celebrate the Harvest School community throughout the remainder of the school year. Thank you, Dr. Masetti, and Board of Trustees, and the student board members for having us be a part of the NVUSD celebration of schools this evening. To our audience, we're going to take just a brief two-minute break, possibly five, and we will be back shortly. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your patience. We appreciate it. Next is River Middle School. Presenting a retrospective of River School over 28 years, this presentation will highlight the advisory program and show the changes in growth over three sites and 28 years. Welcome, Principal Adams.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Masetti, the Board of Trustees, the Assistant Superintendent and Directors for allowing us this time. My name is Kathy Adams, and I'm serving in my second year as Principal of River School. Jordan, can I have the first slide, please? As the introduction said, this presentation will be a little different from the others, as we want to share a retrospective of River School over the last 28 years during this year of celebration and closure. Next slide, please. This first slide shows our growth. On the left is a photo of the very first class in 1994 of 48 students, and the photo on the right is our current eighth-grade class, the largest ever at 165 students squished together for the eighth-grade panoramic photo. We have grown over the years from 48 to a high of 460 with the unmet potential for an even higher school total, given the many years of a waiting list. Next slide, please. So we've gone from a Quonset hut by the Napa River to a beautiful 10-acre campus. We started with 48 students and two teachers, and now have 428 students, 17 full-time teachers, and 18 staff. The school began as an NCOE alternative school, and the second year joined the Napa Valley as a Napa Valley Unified Charter School, and in 2000, we became a regular district school. The school is founded by T. Beller and Gail Chase Bian, parents who felt the Napa community deserved an alternative to the traditional middle school. Their vision was for a school with an integrated arts-based curriculum where students learned at their own pace in a nurturing environment, and a school that encouraged students' responsibility and also had parent involvement. Linda Inlay came to the school in year three and brought the philosophy we use today. Next slide, please. And here are some photos from our three locations. On the left, the start and two Quonset huts at the Napa Tannery by the river, then the move to the Ridgeview Campus in 1999, where we shared with Temescal, Napa Valley Adult School, and Garden Haven Alzheimer's Day Program. When construction began on campus in 2002 to welcome Harvest, PE and school meetings happened wherever we fit, including being caged in the tennis courts for PE and all school meetings where every student carried their own chair out to the parking lot. We then shared with Harvest for 16 and a half years, finally opening in January 2020 at the Salvador site and enjoying just 40 wonderful school days before COVID hit. Next slide, please. So we do use the Hualoa philosophy that Linda Inlay brought. Hualoa in Hawaiian means an awakening of self. So we support the students' social and emotional development, and we're to create a school culture that promotes self-assured, responsible, respectful, and academically successful students, and our foundation or anchor to do this work is through our advisory program. Next slide, please. The four Rs are an important part of our philosophy and school language. Students use these Rs as they reflect on their behaviors, both positive and negative, and we have some slightly different definitions for these words. So we ask students and ourselves to be responsive, to act for the good of the whole, because we are interdependent and interconnected. We need to be responsible to see ourselves as cause, not victim, because you lose your power when you blame, lie, make excuses, and justify, and you gain power by owning the choices you make. We are resourceful, instead of complaining, focus on what works, and problem solve. And we are respectful. We honor decision-making boundaries for ourselves and others. We respect others by not making decisions for them that are probably theirs to make, and we respect ourselves by not allowing others to make decisions that are ours to make. Next slide, please. Advisory is where building relationships with each other and adults begins. Students feed to River from 15 to 20 schools through open enrollment, and building school culture and student relationships are essential. Much of this work takes place in advisory so that students feel safe and are able to learn. Next slide, please. This is a prototype of advisory ideas. We support new and veteran teachers with schedules, a shared advisory folder, and timely lesson plans regarding school happenings. Once teachers get in the groove, they plan most of their advisory time off and on a weekly schedule. So some examples are Management Monday, where students set goals, share about their weekends, and maybe do some chores around the school or the classroom. Trusting Tuesday can allow for community circles that might be about problem-solving, sharing. They can give a leadership opportunity for students, and they can be a lot of fun. Hualoa Wednesday, where we review the four Rs, our school-wide parables, and our agreement system, and that can be done in a variety of ways, including fishbowl clearings, cahoot, and role-playing. Thoughtful Thursday allows for listening groups, small groupings of students, pairs of triads, sharing and listening and learning to listen, as well as to express their feelings. And Fun Friday is for community building, their games, celebrations, monthly breakfast, and some good music trivia. Next slide, please. River has always been a project-based school, starting with the Buck Institute for Training and moving to the New Tech Network, and finally to Michael McDowell. We have also taught through art integration, and as you can see in the photos, we participated in World Savvy for many years and were quite successful. Built toothpick bridges in science, and we have cooked and we have gardened. And I want to give a shout-out to the pretty dirty and slightly confused-looking art student in the middle bottom right. That is my son Alex, who's a River School graduate and is now 30 years old. Next slide, please. Like all schools, River has its traditions. You can see students enjoying the end-of-the-year trivia bowl, where questions range from Math 1 equations to the name of a teacher's cat. Teams must have one member from each grade level, and you can always ask the audience, which allows everyone to cheer on a team and think about the answers while enjoying a whole-school event. In the middle bottom, our annual Stomp fundraiser gets going. This is a River-to-River event where students walk from the Old Sonoma Site to Kennedy Park, raising money like a jog-a-thon. We then enjoyed lunch, provided and cooked by our parents, and then played in the park together for the afternoon. And three of these photos show classrooms set and ready for our Thanksgiving feast. Every year, the day before Thanksgiving, our advisory share a meal together. It's a wonderful day to celebrate together. Meals range from full-on turkey dinners to pizza potlucks, to everyone bringing their favorite. We adjust the day's schedule to allow for play, eating, and gathering. It is a tradition we will all miss. Next slide, please. Over 28 years, technology sure has changed, from overhead projectors to Promethean boards to Zoom, and from no computers to individual Chromebooks. Next slide, please. On this slide, we celebrate honor roll and promoting our students out of ELD. The pool noodles are used for simulation, standing in for the weapons... The pool noodles are used for simulation, standing in for the weapons of the Aztecs. The Spanish have pool noodles and Nerf guns and get to run while the Aztecs have to proceed on their knees and often fall from disease. It's one way to teach history. Next slide, please. And as I've mentioned, we love to play. Here are a few shots of us on various adventures. Ice skating and singing, a trip to Scandia, teachers versus student softball and some dancing on Halloween. Next slide, please. Outdoor education has been a big yearly adventure. Students and teachers and parents have traveled to Marin Headlands, Wonder Valley outside of Fresno, Mount Herman in the Santa Cruz Mountains for hands-on science lessons and adventures while building cross-grade teams and learning more about their fellow students. Probably our most memorable trips were the years of the Amazing Race in San Francisco. The first race was in 2003 and every three years we recreated and renewed this trip so that all students would have the experience while at River. If you've seen the TV show, you know the teams raced from place to place, in our case, collecting points to try and win. With over 100 different locations at different point values, teams planned strategies, chose different roles and routes and took off. The last time we went in 2018, we rented a ferry and filled it with 500 students, teachers and chaperones and ended on campus with a dinner and a slideshow. Our winning team and their parent chaperones still talk about it. So many different skills are used, from working with others to navigation, to budgeting, learning some basics like how to use public transportation and being inclusive with our mixed-grade team. What a great memory for our school community. Next slide, please. We work hard at providing opportunities for friendship building as students come again from 15 to 20 different schools and often don't know very many other students. We spend the first three days of the school year community building in our advisory groups and meeting others before our real classes begin. Next slide, please. River has had the opportunity to offer a number of different visual and performing arts through the years. Band and visual arts have been a staple, while drama, musical theater, drumming, choir and mariachi have all had a turn. Next slide, please. And as we close out our final year, we will once again celebrate with an eighth grade trip and our unique promotion ceremony. Every staff member and promoting student will receive a flower lei, as is our tradition. Each promoting student will also receive a quote picked especially for them by a teacher with whom they have a connection. The quote is printed on a photo chosen for this year's class suitable for framing. This year, as a staff, we will also choose a quote for one another as a memory of our time together. Next slide. This is the end, not just the end of a slideshow, but the end of an era, the end of a great school and the end of a community. It is with great sadness that I say the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Principal Adams. We will now be moving to Silverado Middle School. Silverado Middle School is excited to celebrate their school with the Board of Trustees and community. SMS believes that teaching is a work of heart and approach every day with that mindset. Their presentation will focus on their mission, how they build community, as well as their academic and wellness programs. They will present as a team and look forward to the celebration. Welcome, Principal Cole.
Good evening, President Jankowicz and VUSD trustees, Dr. Masetti, cabinet members and our community. It's an honor to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Silverado Middle School community. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate our wonderful school. Jordan, can you please bring up the presentation for us? Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Cole and I'm the proud principal of Silverado Middle School. Presenting along with me tonight are Assistant Principals Mike Smith and James Dennis, as well as teacher leaders Kevin Coak, Judy Edwards, Ethan Shimer and James Weckler. Tonight, we will present on our mission, our community, our academic program and also our MTSS implementation. We will also hear from some of our students, which is really the fun part, regarding what it means to them to be a Silverado Dawn. I want to acknowledge the unique year we have had this year and tell you how proud I am of our students and our staff. We showed up this year in the midst of uncertainty in our community and our world to rebuild. We know that connectedness protects students. And so we set out this year to connect and to be together. We have laughed, we've learned, we've persevered and we've thrived. Next slide, please. This is the list of who will be presenting tonight and I just want to make a special shout out to James Weckler, who is a Napa County Teacher of the Year finalist. So you will hear from James tonight. That's very exciting for us at Silverado. Next slide, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Judy Edwards and I teach sixth grade and eighth grade language arts at Silverado and I'm also the ELA team lead. Tonight, you will hear how we bring to life our Silverado Middle School mission to ensure that our students reach their highest potential. Middle school is a journey that requires us to attend to every aspect of the student. Every day, we provide students with a rigorous curriculum, support positive behavior and tend to their social and emotional needs. We know that students learn best when they have a sense of belonging that comes from connections with both adults and their peers on campus. We consciously work to build these connections each day. Silverado Middle School is a place where staff, families and the community work collaboratively to support the development of the whole child using student-driven inquiry to create lifelong intellectual, emotional and social learners. We inspire all our students to achieve their greatest potential by instilling integrity, respect, responsibility and ownership for oneself. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm James Dennis, Assistant Principal. Creating community is the heart of our work. For many years, Silverado has been part of the Cal Grant along with McPherson, Shear, Phillips and Napa High. One of our goals through this grant is to foster community and student voice in the classroom and across our campus. We accomplish this in different ways. First, we intentionally build student leadership opportunities by offering three kinds of experiences. Yearbook, Leadership and Leila. The Leila class works in partnership with On the Move. All three classes are scheduled during the same period. This allows us to build connections at the student leadership level with a very diverse group of students. These student leaders create fun activities for the whole school, like Spirit Weeks, where students and staff dress up in fun outfits. Activity periods, similar to high school rallies, where we have fun games that our students play and the whole school cheers them on. And we have middle school dances, which are completely different from high school dances. Our teachers welcome students into their classroom every period at the door so students see a friendly face and teachers are able to briefly check in with students. In the classroom, we build a feeling of togetherness with community circles, which gives students the opportunity to use their voice, find similarities and work through differences with others. We also have a lot of fun. Wednesday jokes over the intercom are a huge hit and our campus supervisor is always using fun riddles with the students in order to make connections for the staff. Oh, connections. For the staff, we host school luncheons, provide them with time during the school day for teacher teams to collaborate, which is very important. And of course, produce our famous Liptdove every year. We believe that attending to the social and emotional needs of our adults is incredibly important so that they can in turn attend to our students' social and emotional needs. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm Ethan Shimer and I teach eighth grade math and serve as the math team leader at Silverado. Students at Silverado take six classes, English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, PE and an elective or academic support class. Our elective program aligns with our local high schools as we offer leadership, music, art, avid and exploratory. We also support students via our special education and ELD programs. We are a highly collaborative staff that structures with structures in place to support our working together. Our teachers plan lessons that are real, relevant and interesting to our students. I have seen our science classes launch rockets out on the backfield. I have read student letters written to members of Congress that are insightful and persuasive as part of a history and language arts project. In math class, we engage students with challenging questions that spark curiosity and allow for multiple ways to solve problems. Our PE coaches provide students the opportunity to play sports they may not have access to outside of school. My favorite classroom is our art room where all four walls are covered with visually stunning pieces done by our very own Silverado students. After 11 years attending our promotion ceremony, I still get goosebumps hearing our band play the National Anthem in front of our community. We also have a lot of fun here at Silverado. Our leadership class planned an amazing dance last Friday to provide our students time to laugh and connect with their friends after school. The learning activities our teachers plan is grounded in our work providing clarity in regards to learning outcomes and objectives. Our math team is using the NVSD proficiency scales to help our students see where they are in their learning and it also gives them a clear target to aim for. We have been working in our PLCs this year to make sure our students are assessment-capable learners and can use the proficiency scales and success criteria to meet grade-level standards. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm Mike Smith, Assistant Principal. Silverado has a culture of learning where students are inspired and empowered to navigate the many challenges they will encounter in middle school. In the classroom, teachers build clarity around learning intentions with their students. Clarity allows students to identify and understand where they are in their unique stages of understanding as they embark on a very personal journey of learning. A common language around academic clarity allows students to respond and advocate for their learning as teachers build a community of scholars. Teachers use a variety of instructional strategies to ensure surface and deep knowledge of the curriculum and use inquiry-based lessons so that students see real-world connections. This is important because we know that students retain information they find interesting and part of the world in which they live. The culture of learning is evident in our classrooms as we hear students talking with one another about content and using their voice to critically think about and demonstrate their learning. We continue to work through learning sprints with our English, Language Arts and Math Departments so that teachers are always working on strategies to increase clarity, challenge and a culture of learning in our classrooms. Next slide, please.
Good evening. My name is James Weckler. I'm a sixth grade math and science teacher as well as the science lead at Silverado. And this year I also served as the MTSS lead. At Silverado Middle School, we pride ourselves in our ability to offer a layered approach to ensure that all students' needs are met. This year, our team has risen to the challenge of utilizing Aries as our progress monitoring tool and using data to make informed decisions to support our students. Our MTSS team focused on the well-being of the whole child and offers many academic, social and behavioral interventions to reach all students. As a group, the MTSS team meets weekly to discuss student progress, evaluate needs and allocate resources. Our Wellness Center is accessible to all students and offers a number of services, including one-on-one supports, conflict mediation, wellness check-ins and partnerships with outside groups. At SMS, it is truly all about our students. Next slide, please.
Hello folks. My name is Kevin Coak and I teach eighth grade social studies at SMS. And I want to start by expressing gratitude for my colleagues tonight for sharing about our Silverado community. This year, as we returned to school, our students needed us to be more than ever present with them. The classroom became a safe haven for students to talk about local, national and international events that were affecting their day-to-day life. We are so proud of our community and our students. They represent us well and they are truly the heart of the school. Here are them in their own words expressing what it's like to be a Silverado Dawn. Jordan, could you press the video, please?
Being a Silverado Dawn to me means you're respectful, responsible, safe and willing to be a lifelong learner. You are also a part of the community here at SMS.
Being a Silverado Dawn means getting a second chance when you make a mistake.
Being a Silverado Dawn to me means to be inclusive and to be supportive of everyone.
Being a Silverado Dawn to me means being a leader and it's being part of a community and not letting others influence you in a bad way, taking action when it's necessary and just like being responsible, not only for yourself, but for others around you.
Being a Silverado Dawn means that, or to me, it means being respectful, responsible, holding yourself accountable and just reaching out for your goals.
Next slide, please.
Thank you, everybody. We are just an amazing team at Silverado and you can see all of the time and attention that they took to share with you their part, each part of the presentation. And so I just want to express my gratitude to the team for taking the time, not only to prepare for this evening, but to take the time to log in and be here tonight. It really is a testament to the collaboration that we have at Silverado and just the teamwork that we are committed to. You know, our middle school program in NVUSD is very strong. It continues to further align through our middle school design work. We're incredibly proud of the NVUSD teachers, leaders and staff in our organization. Silverado looks forward to welcoming new students to our campus next year. We're busy planning an event on April 20th where we'll welcome families to our campus and we're busy planning an event for our new students who will join us in May so that they can take a field trip to the school and kind of see what Silverado is all about to really help and guide them in that transition. So we look forward to meeting all of them and hearing more about who they are and how they will contribute to our ever-evolving culture and our community of learners at Silverado. We thank you for the time tonight to celebrate our school and this concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Principal Cole. We now have Vintage High School. Vintage High School looks forward to introducing the administrative team, sharing the myriad of programs and opportunities Vintage High engages in daily and presenting examples of their innovative work. They are excited to share the preliminary outcomes of the WASC visit and the action plan that will guide Vintage in the coming three to six years of its journey. Welcome, Principal O'Connor.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Masetti, President Jankowicz and VUSD Board Trustees and District Leaders and all leaders who are with us tonight. I am, as we say, the loud and proud principal of Vintage High School. And I kind of affectionately refer to myself as that, but I must say that I'm not alone at all in this work. There are truly just leaders surrounding me at all times. I want to introduce my administrative team. Jordan, I cannot see if our presentation is already up. There we go. If you could just advance to that next slide, that'd be great. So the administrative team are kind of official administrative leaders that work with me every day are Mr. Keith Sedgley, Mr. Tyler Roberts and Ms. Lourdes Rosales. However, we have athletic leaders, we have activities leaders, leadership teams made up of faculty members, department leaders, PLC leaders, student government leaders and crush leaders. We have just leaders that I could go on and on for days. Leadership is a very important part of Vintage High School and really is what guides the work that I will have the honor of presenting with you tonight. If I could get that next slide. Alright, so I mean, in truth, in some ways Vintage High School is really just like any other comprehensive high school. If you looked at the programs that we offer, the amazing faculty that we have, students that are, what they're doing kind of day in and day out, we're really pretty standard, right? But there are so many things I think that make us really special. And so the theme of the Celebration of School Vintage Presentation is what makes us special, what makes us different. Take that next slide. Alright, so what makes us special and what makes us different? In terms of the, from my perspective as the loud and proud principal, really what makes us special is our really what makes us special is our innovative approach. I know that there are a number of board and strategic plan, board priorities that center on things like ethnic studies, refreshing the core, MTSS and interventions, lots of really amazing work that's occurring across our system and is really the right work. However, what makes me really proud is that how we've been doing this work at Vintage High School for some time and how we continue to align to the strategic vision of the district as we move this work forward, both on the forefront and in partnership with the schools and district around us. The next slide, please. There are three examples that I'd love to share with you tonight from my perspective before we hear from our greater community about what makes us special and what makes us unique. The first of the three innovative areas is called our Crush Initiative. We were very, very much early adopters of the culturally and community relevant work that we call Crush. Crush stands for culturally and community relevant sustaining and humanizing. And as crushers, we like to say that we put the U in Crush. Crush looks like a number of different things at Vintage. Things that I think are important and aligned to the greater work of our community and our district. The first is how Crush is infused within the curriculum specifically within English and social studies. Our English courses and social studies courses are taught through a Crush lens, focusing not only on the books that we read, the perspectives that we take, the alternative perspectives and narratives that students are studying in each of those classes, but also in the way that they're learning. The instructional teaching and learning push through a culturally and community relevant lens is part of Crush and influences every student in every classroom every day. Additionally, we have grade level themes where students explore their identity. They purposely create belonging and then they later pursue what is their purpose and how will they be in the world around us. And then finally, we have an annual theme every year that focuses on who we are as a community. And we have a number of activities, including, including the annual Plaza Vintage that celebrates not only students' unique identities and heritages, but also how we form one community of Crusher Nation. Next slide, please. Just a little reminder, we put the U in Crush. And that doesn't mean just the U of the Vintage students, but we hope that it means across our entire community. How do you, everyone in NVUSD and all the people that are part of our parent community and our greater world, how are we putting all of you into Crush? This is the symbol that we use in a number of different avenues and venues that we take. And we hope that now that we've presented it at Celebration of Schools, that it will be something that all of us recognize and see our part in over time. Next slide, please. The second thing that's really innovative in the work that we've been doing for a number of years now at Vintage is how we keep our eyes on kids. Currently, the MTSS work, including Aries Analytics that occurs across our district is really pretty amazing, I must say. I'm proud of not only the work of our MTSS team at Vintage, but the work that's going on in lots of schools across NVUSD. However, long before MTSS was really such a kind of a standard thing, Vintage has been doing something called Data 101. Data 101 is where we take students who have IEPs 504s who receive ELD services or are homeless and fostered. We sort those students and we monitor, we ask students, or sorry, we ask teachers to report on their progress and we ask them to take action steps for any students whose report is what we call either in the yellow or red. Jordan, if you could advance the next slide, I'll show everyone what this means. Data 101 means that a teacher can go to our Data 101 spreadsheet three times per semester, find themselves as the teacher on the spreadsheet, see all their students listed by period that have IEPs 504s, receive ELD services or are homeless and fostered. Now that those students are sorted, teachers are able to say and kind of assess for themselves, is this student doing well? Are they in the green? Are they yellow? Or I'm a little concerned about how they're doing academically or maybe socially and emotionally? Or are they in the red and have high concern to me? Then after indicating if they're red, yellow or green, teachers then say, what is my next step or intervention that I'll take? Administratively, we use this spreadsheet to recombine the data and say, who are our students who are red in three or more classes? We later call these students students in the purple and we take larger systemic action. The attention on students that are most vulnerable that we ask our faculty to visit three times a semester have resulted in the most exciting data as we were in COVID. I'm proud of the fact that the pass rate and graduation rate at Vintage High School during COVID was the very best in the district. And I must say, I think it's because of the attention that individual teachers were giving to students in the areas, uh, in this, in the areas that are most at risk. If you could go to the next slide, please. The third innovation that I'll share before I really pass it on to all of the other people who are part of our programs is what we're calling Crusher Bridge. Crusher Bridge is a new intervention that Vintage launched this year. We identified 89th graders. These 89th graders are students who failed English, math or both in eighth grade. Additionally, these 89th graders were students who were not already placed in either Avid or in a service that's linked to their IEP. So they're general education students who had data indicated that where they were most at risk in starting ninth grade based on their data in eighth grade. And we asked them, would you like to be in our Crusher Bridge Intervention Program? Shockingly, almost all of them said yes. We then selected three strong veteran faculty, one counselor leader and 15 dedicated upperclassmen to act as peer tutors in these three classes. These classes, these intervention Crusher Bridge classes are offered to students every single day. It's part of their class schedule. During the week of Crusher Bridge, one day a week, social workers and our intervention counselor pushes in to do social emotional learning. Additionally, two of the five days are entirely linked to peer tutors working with small groups of three to five students that they partner with all, all year long to support them in their academic classes. And finally, um, students have a number of organizational tools that they use to plan their week at the beginning on Monday and celebrate on Friday. We have seen countless amazing results already and I'm most excited to share that this Crusher Bridge Intervention uses the staffing that's allocated to us as a school and uses less than 5% of our total budget. If you would advance this slide, please, Jordan. This graph is just one example of showing how Crusher Bridge has changed academic outcomes for students who are most at risk. The orange section of the pie on the left are the number of, of Fs that students had at their progress report across Crusher Bridge. You'll then see on the right that the number of Fs across all students in Crusher Bridge went from 12% of all of the grades to just around 4%. For students who have in Crusher Bridge sometimes earned all Fs in all of their eighth time in eighth grade, this is an enormous success, not just for individual students, but for students across the Crusher Bridge program. Could you go to the next slide, please? This data may be a little bit more challenging to unpack in a large board meeting. However, it shows that yes, it ebbs and flows. Students are successful. They may find more challenge than they find success again. But what's most exciting is that this program has not even been in place for a full year and it will be exciting to see what happens for these students and what their graduation rate is like and their ability to stay at Vintage High School as opposed to move to a continuation high school. Next slide, please. As was introduced by President Jankowicz, we just finished our WASC report at Vintage High School, including our WASC visiting committees, um, assessment of our self-study. I'm pleased to let you know that all of the categories that we were, um, judged in in WASC resulted in an effective or highly effective outcome. What's important moving forward though is our action plan. Our action plan at Vintage involves work in the four areas that are in front of you right now. How we work in PLCs, what our interventions are for students, consistent systems across our school and continuing the work of Crush. I'm excited for how this work will move Vintage High School from being a great school to an amazing school. There is certainly a bright future ahead. Next slide, please. As I say during our campus tours, of course, of course, a principal is going to brag. Every principal is loud and proud, I'm sure. What's most important to me is that you hear from the staff and students of all sorts of programs across Vintage about what they think is unique and special. That to me is really celebrating. Before we watch the video that is linked into that picture, Jordan, I just want to invite all of you tonight, whether you're a district leader or a board member. You're all welcome at Vintage anytime to see this work in action. We'd love to have you. Alright, ready for the video, Jordan?
Sorry, one second.
While Jordan's launching the video, I'll go ahead and give kudos first then to Mr. JP Castillo who runs our digital multimedia program and Luis Ramirez Soto, the student who took on most of this project.
Hi there. I'm Dr. Sarah O'Connor. I'm the principal at Vintage High School. Vintage High School is comprised of over 2,000 students, staff and faculty, but we're much more than that. We also have an extension of alumni, parents, families and those who are just, you know, fans of Crusher Nation. At Vintage High School, we believe that all students can learn at high levels in inclusive communities that develop proficiency in collaboration, communication, creativity and critical thinking. We do this work through our professional learning communities of faculty and staff that ensures that teaching and learning across our system is aligned and consistent. Lots of schools across our district and across our state have visions and missions similar to this. But something that sets us apart at Vintage, something that makes us special and something that I'm extremely proud of is what we call Crush. Crush stands for Community and Culturally Responsive, Sustaining and Humanizing. Crush is what grounds us at Vintage. It's what unites us and it's the lens through which we pass all of the work that we do. Crush looks like classroom communities where students are studying community and culturally relevant curriculum and getting instruction in a way that's also community and culturally relevant. It also includes school-wide activities that promote identity exploration, helps students feel valued for who they are and helps encourage students to honor who others are. In Crush, we have grade level themes. In ninth grade, we ask students to explore, who am I? In 10th grade, we ask students to really think about, who are you? The other students in their classroom. In 11th grade, we explore, who are we as a community? And in 12th grade, we push students to really explore, who will I be? What is their purpose and who is the person they've developed in high school? And how will that be in their community and world after they graduate? Crush looks like annual themes. Themes we've had in the past, like if you walked a mile in my shoes or telling our stories to make the invisible visible. It looks like promoting kindness and generosity in the month of February. And it looks like the Identity and Community Focused Week of Plaza Vintage, where we as a school come alive, expressing who we are as individuals, Monday through Thursday, through words, music, dance, heritage and the arts. And then on Friday, celebrate not only our identity, but our collective community in our Plaza Vintage, in the quad and throughout campus. Crush is something that makes us special. It's something that stands out and makes us unique and it's something that I'm extremely proud of. It's one thing to hear what makes the principal proud. It's another thing to hear from crushers about what they say makes us unique, what's special and really makes them proud.
Hi, I'm Lisa Sullivan with the Vintage High School Performing Arts Dance. And in our department, we're extremely proud and what makes us so special is our collaborative efforts between instructors and our programs. We really appreciate all of our students and their hard work and we like to support them in community projects with, on, within our program and our campuses, including our big game field show and our winter production, our musicals. And then allowing students and supporting students in their crossovers as they are part of all of our programs and allowing that.
Sorry, everyone. I'm going to try to reload here.
Family and unity within our staff and within our our student, helping them grow and become college and career-ready.
My name is Cam Neal. I'm the Athletic Director of Vintage High School. And what makes Vintage Athletics stand out above the rest? I'd point to three things. First, our coaching staff. You'll find that pretty much every sport has alumni and/or people that have been committed for more than just a couple of years. Many of them have been around for five plus years. Along with that, we have big staffs. We have, um, lots of, lots of assistant coaches so that our ratio of athletes to coaches is pretty small. Second, I would point to our schedules. It may seem silly, but, um, when we schedule our games, we don't seek out low-hanging fruit. We seek out competitive situations so that our athletes are tested. So if we win, it feels really good. If we lose, well, we know we played a really tough opponent. We can sleep at night. Lastly, I'd, I'd point to the, our, our support system. When I speak of support system, I'm speaking of when our kids, our athletes walk around campus, pretty much within every 10, 20 feet, they're going to run into somebody that knows they're an athlete. And they're going to check in on their grades, their behavior. Could be teachers, could be admin, could be me, could be coaches that are on campus. And then off-site, off-site, we have a booster club that is incredibly supportive financially as well as attending games. We got a pretty good thing going here, Vintage.
Hi, my name is Sean Sandall. I am the Printing and Graphics Teacher here at Vintage High School, part of the CTE pathway. And CTE classes, we have six different CTE classes here on campus. Many of the teachers either work in industry currently or have worked in industry prior. And really what we do is we take skills and translate that into life outside of the classroom. Our CTE classes are extraordinarily collaborative. We work with different classes on campus, uh, clubs, teams, administration, and even out into the community. And we as a CTE department, uh, are really proud of working with our students and forming the community abroad.
Hello, my name's Kelly Watkins and I'm a counselor at Vintage High School. One of the things that makes Vintage so unique is the courses that we offer. We have the largest amount of AP class offerings in the district, spanning from AP Language and Literature in our English Department, AP Spanish Language and Literature, AP French. We are, we're still working on expanding our ASL, but we're one of the only programs that has sign language all the way through level three. Our sciences are incredible. We have AP Physics, AP Chem, AP Environmental Science, AP Computer Programming. We also have AP Bio. We, we have non-AP classes that are additionally really cool science offerings like Oceanography and Anatomy and Physiology. There's just so much choice for our students. In addition to just AP courses, we have the most CTE pathways, I believe, in the district that the county supports. So we have our Graphics and Printing CTE Pathway, our Culinary Pathway. We have our Ag Pathway. That's a four-year pathway connected with our farm, which I'm pretty sure we are the only school that has a huge working farm. Hundreds of chickens, like I think there's 80-plus lambs. Hundreds of chickens, like I think there's 80-plus lambs. And they also do viticulture work with pruning. It's insane that we offer that. And then we have the Digital Media Pathway. That's Levels 1 and 2 in addition to our Business Pathway. So giving students hand-on experience to have practical skills to apply once they leave Vintage and go into the working world, I think makes Vintage really, really unique.
Here at Vintage, we're fortunate to have a great special education department. We try to support students in meeting their academic goals and help transition students after high school into their post-secondary educational option or career field that they would like to pursue.
I think one of the greatest gifts with working with a group like Power Piles is just being able to see different perspectives and how we're all just students at Vintage High School. And although they might be at different levels, we really get to see how they function, what they do, and just grow up with them and see their progress.
Hi, my name is Claudia Ronda, and I work here at Vintage High School as a parent/leader. I love working with ELD students because I love seeing their growth academically and also with their language. Here at Vintage High School, we have an ELD Math Tutor Program, where the students come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays for 30 minutes, and they get help with their Math 1 or Math 2 homework.
Hello, my name is Sarah Mendez. I'm the Bilingual Instructional Assistant at Vintage High. I work with the ELD students all day, translating and supporting them with their assignments. The most rewarding thing about working with the ELD students is being able to see them grow in their academic skills and as well as in the English language.
Also, here at Vintage High School, we have a strong parent group called Voces de los Padres, which is ELAC. We meet eight times a year to talk about different topics like college and career readiness, about LPAC, recalcification. We also have people doing presentations about Napa Valley College, Puertas Abiertas. So every month, we have a different topic.
Hello, my name is Dylan Harley. I'm an ELD teacher here at Vintage High School. I'm rewarded every day by hard-working enthusiastic students. It is truly amazing to see their academic and intellectual growth. Many of these kids are newcomers who have been in the country for less than one to two years. But when they graduate from Vintage, they will have the skills and confidence to be successful and to make positive contributions to our local and global communities.
What makes student leadership special here on our campus is that we want to represent our students on our campus. Grade-wise, we have that representation in the class, and that we work at adapting what we do to meet where our students are at in the time and current place and feelings and environment and all of those elements.
To play off of that, what makes the CRUSH Leaders Class special to Vintage is that our leadership artist already does a great job at like planning all these events. And there's a lot of structure built into the year, where this class is a little bit more flexible, where we can kind of identify needs that the campus may need as we go. And we try to address those and kind of maybe play off the regular leadership class a bit. But what's cool about, I think, both the classes is it's student-driven. There's kids that are coming from a super genuine, authentic place, where they just want to make Vintage a better place in really any way they can. And we both just try to tackle those issues and make it happen. So that's kind of the cool part about our classes.
Hi, I'm Lata Casca. I'm the avid coordinator here at Vintage High School. Our Avid program, just like everywhere, it helps to support students in their goal and dream of attending college. Specifically here at Vintage High School, we have an amazing team of avid teachers who are thoroughly invested in the future of our students, making sure that they're doing well in their classes now, making sure that they can fill out their applications and with financial aid to obtain that goal of reaching college.
My name's Melanie Merkner, and I run the Peer Support Program at Vintage High School. The Peer Support Program is special to Vintage because it's a program that exemplifies the idea of community. It not only provides a safe and calm environment for everyone, but it teaches students how to engage with others and to make them feel safe and heard. Sometimes, all students need is to be listened to and heard. Peer Support helps mentees express their emotions while allowing mentors to become more understanding and empathetic. Many peer support students say that the skills they learn during their time in the program are skills that they'll be taking with them for the rest of their life.
Hi, my name is Jen Castellazo, and I'm a teacher for the ninth-grade Crusher Bridge class at Vintage, also known as Ninth Grade Academic Skills. What makes Crusher Bridge so special at Vintage High School is that it really is a bridge for students that are coming in to have connections emotionally, socially, and academically. We're really proud of the program that we just started this year.
My name is Keith Sedgley. I'm one of the assistant principals at Vintage High School. Just a little bit about Vintage and our policies. Like every school has policies, every school has rules. I think what makes Vintage a little bit different is the way that we go about creating those rules and in the ways that we work with our students when trying to implement those rules. When we create those rules, we try to talk a lot about our collective lift, how things are better if we kind of do it all together. So we try to get a lot of buy-in from the staff before we implement something to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we're all kind of looking out for each other to make sure that you're making your neighbor's job a little bit easier. As far as interacting with the students, we want to kind of put a humanizing face on everything we're doing. So while there needs to be consequences, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out why this rule might be being broken, what support the student might need. And so all of our systems are sort of built hopefully to make the students feel valued and ultimately to try to change the behavior in a way to make them the most successful they can be.
Just like any other NVUSD High School, we have a Student Services Department. What stands out about ours is how our four grade-level counselors, our interventionist counselor and our counseling intern, work seamlessly with each other to provide all sorts of supports for our students. Everything from future planning and registration to social emotional support for our students. Vintage is also lucky enough to have a school psychologist, speech and language therapist onsite, as well as our social worker. All of these people, as well as others, work tirelessly with me on the MTSS team to help identify and place students into supports and interventions to get them the help that they need.
All right, and that really is the end of our presentation for this evening. Thank you so much for having us, and please, like it says, come by and check it out for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Principal O'Connor. And our last presentation this evening is from the Napa Valley Adult Education School. Napa Valley Adult Education serves adult reentry students focusing primarily on the areas of English as a Second Language, High School Diploma and Equivalency, and Career and Technical Education. The school is fundamentally different from the schools in Napa Valley Unified School District's K-12 program. NBAE receives an annual allotment from the state that is not directly tied to NVUSD's general fund, has its own board, works closely with various partners throughout the Napa Valley, and can quickly pivot to develop new programs. Despite these differences, NBAE aligns itself closely with the mission, vision, and goals of NVUSD. The result is a program that nicely complements and supports the district's excellent K-12 program. Welcome, Principal Jordan.
Thank you very much. That kind of just about sums it up right there. We can call it right there. Let me give a big thank you to the trustees here because I think this is maybe the 28th presentation that you've heard over the course of the last two years. And it's nice to be able to present Napa Valley Adult Ed, but also at this moment, think about the fact that the board has created this opportunity for each school in the district. And so my thanks to the trustees, of course, to Dr. Masetti and the rest of the members of the cabinet. And special thanks to Pat and to Monica because they've really given me some really clear direction on how to move forward on this presentation. So Jordan, can we pull up the first slide? So our school is different, and I'm gonna kind of go through a bit of a history as I describe what our school does. So Jordan, the next slide. So I'll talk to the, I'll talk each night about our school in kind of three parts. The creation of the consortiums, the planning implementation, and then finish up with student data and program information. And I was able to sit down with trustee Gonzales Maras and knowing that she wasn't going to be here, and we spent about an hour and a half together, and we talked quite a bit about this presentation. And I told her that I planned on giving more of a historical perspective and how adult ed has evolved. And she thought that was a good idea because the school is so different from the rest of the schools in the district. So Jordan, next slide, please. So beginning with the creation of the consortiums, that was really a turning point here in California with respect to adult ed. Next slide, please. But prior to the consortiums being created, adult schools across the state all collected ADA. They did, we did credit recovery for all the high schools in the district. We had community interest classes, I think yoga and weightlifting. We had kind of limited connections with our educational and various other partners with, across the county here. And our completion rates in some core areas were pretty low. And that all kind of began to shift in 2010 at the, in the middle of the Great Recession. Adult Ed funds were frozen, and that led to a big change. So next slide, please. Coming out of the Great Recession, AB 86 was passed, and it established a planning grant for the new version or vision of what adult schools can be, could be. That eventually turned into AB 104, which was the, created the implementation phase and really established how the funding was going to work for adult schools going forward. At that point, the ADA funding process was ended. Seventy-one consortiums were created across the state that align with the community college service areas. And the expectation was set that adult schools work closely with the, with high schools, with other adult schools, with the community colleges in their area to create a consistent set of options for students, adult reentry students. As a result, each of the consortiums across the state are different. But one thing that is required by the state is that each of the consortiums create a three-year plan and were held to some very strict data collecting requirements. Next slide, please. So as the consortium era began, the state came back and said to the adult schools, "There's only seven areas where you can offer program." And they're listed here, Adult Basic Ed and High School Programs, ESL, Adult Workforce Reentry, ASL 12, which is programs that we have to assist parents whose kids are in the K-12 program, adults with disabilities, Career and Technical Education, and Pre-Aprentice Training. And that's it. Nothing more, nothing less. These are the only, the seven areas that we can offer program. Next slide. So from that, from those changes, and there's obviously more to it here, but time won't allow to go into those details. We really shifted as an adult school, and no longer did we, we really worked to a point where we wanted to no longer think of ourselves as sort of independent groups working with English learners or high school students or working in CTE. And we're at a point now where we really think about the, how the high school program and the ESL programs feed into the CTE pathways, which then feed into larger pathways across the county. Next slide, please. So with the shift to the consortium structure, we were tasked with a very specific set of planning and requirements. And next slide, please. That resulted in the three-year plans that I spoke about. I came to Napa Valley Adult Ed just as we were finishing up the first three-year plan. And in 2018, the start of 2019, we began to develop the next three-year plan, which is, will come to its close here in June. But from that planning that we did as a consortium, which included involving a lot of members in the community and students and teacher feedback, we developed five goals, the first of which was to develop clear and consistent CTE pathways, which we've done, and we now have eight pathways. I sent each of you a copy of the second version of the pathway brochures, and so you have an idea what those eight pathways are. The second goal was to establish a communication tool that would allow the various agencies to communicate with each other, and we've done that. The board approved the purchase of Community Pro Suite, and that is in place right now. The third goal related to badging, which is really a way to create either a stackable credential or some sort of consistent certification that can be recognized within the community. This has been a struggle for us as a consortium, and so I'll speak a little bit about how that has evolved in just a little bit. The fourth goal was to create transition protocols so that we were clear as to who was doing what at the various levels. And we became really a focus for us to make sure that our students were making these transitions. And the last goal from that, this three-year plan, was to continue to provide the courses that we were offering that were within those seven programming areas, and then to build on that and expand. Next slide, please. So at the same time we were working on this three-year plan, Napa Valley Adult Ed began the WASC process. And it's important to understand that Napa Valley Adult Ed is the only adult ed program in the county, in the consortium. And so we received the majority of funding from the state that comes to the consortium, and we work with adults across the whole county, including servicing students in St. Helena and Calistoga. So with that in mind, it's important, was important to me and important to our team that our individual direction, as established via the WASC process, aligned closely with the three-year plan and vice versa. So we developed this mission statement that we serve our community by educating and supporting adult learners to advance in their education and careers. And it was a time-consuming process as it should be. And really focusing on that word "serve" was a big shift for our school to really begin to think differently about what our role was. And we really captured that changing role in the student learning objectives, and we have three of those. Next slide, please. The first one is simply to set goals. Students will establish goals and develop an education or job plan with multiple entrance and exit points. Next slide. The second one is to demonstrate growth. Students will use classroom instruction, technology, and other resources to grow in their chosen area of study. And the last student learning objective, slide, please, is make transitions. So following their plans, students will transition to advanced classes, new schools, new training programs, higher wages, new jobs, and/or new careers. It was very important to us that we created this sense of motion with these student learning objectives that when students arrive, they create a plan. We help them work that plan and support them in that process, and then help them transition onto the thing that is, that they want to go on to next to continue their training. Again, this was a real shift for us, and the speed at which students come in, work hard, and finish has become very important to us, and we continue to increase the rate at which students enter, do the work, and then leave. Next slide, please. Currently, we are in the final stages of the development of the new three-year plan. We've had a series of community meetings and additional feedback and work. And again, we are the main player in the adult ed world in Napa County. And so these draft goals here really are about Napa Valley Adult Ed. The first one here, explore additional pathways. So you've seen the So you've seen the eight pathways that we have and we're talking about exploring additional pathways in the areas, in a series of other areas. Expand the use of Community Pro Suite, the communication tool, creation of a work readiness certification. This is the area that has evolved out of the badges discussion. And this is a countywide effort that's going to be a heavy lift, but I think one that we're on good, on a good position to make happen. Increase access both digitally and geographically. We know that we have some outlying communities that we are not serving as well as we could. And then increase our strategic marketing to really target some of those students that we haven't been able to connect with yet. Next slide, please. So last part is just some information about who our students are and how they're doing. Next slide, please. First one is just a straight line number of students we have. In each year, there are two different columns. Any student that walks in our door and completes an enrollment form counts as an enrollment. The next column there, the students' column, only, we can only count us an enrolled student as an actual student by the state's definition who has received 12 hours of instruction. And so when you look at those two numbers across the span of these four years, you see that we had an increase in 2019, 2020. And then we had a significant drop during COVID, not a surprise. And this data that we're looking at in the orange for the current year was from late February. And so we are almost at 3,000 students at that time as enrolled students. And then the student number is 1711. So clearly we're having a rebound from COVID. But the real story of this graph here is if you look again at 1819, of those 3794 students that enrolled, only 51% of those students became students, had 12 or more hours of instruction. In 1920, that percentage jumped to 53%. The next year it was at 60%. And currently, again, with data from just February, 74% of those 2,298 students have continued to the point where they've received 12 hours of instruction. It's a, it's a big shift on how we're working with students, but it is an accurate reflection of those student learning objectives that I described earlier. Next slide, please. When our students enroll, I think a lot of people assume that adult ed students, a good many of them are younger in that 18 to 25 range, but really our bread and butter is 25 to 54. These are students that have been in the workforce and they're coming to us to improve the quality of their life, to earn a higher income, to be able to support their family at a better level. And so that number to me is no surprise. I mean, this is who we're, who we're really set up to serve. Interestingly though, the number of 18 to 20-year-olds, 21-year-olds have increased a little bit over the last few years, as well as that last orange box, the 10. These are current high school students that have taken courses with us up through February. This is an area, a real area of growth for us and support for the district. So without being able to go into a lot of detail there, it's a, that's also kind of a big deal and very proud of that movement. Next slide, please. This, the important number here is when we look at who our students are in terms of employment, when they enter, 59% of our students tell us that they have a job, but it's misleading. Next slide, please. Because 60% of our students earn under $15,000 a year and 95% of our students earn less than $50,000 a year when they come to us. And so clearly while they're employed, they're underemployed and they're coming to us to create a better situation, to better themselves and ideally be able to earn more income. Next slide, please. Specific to some of the programs, I'll walk through this graph because it can be a little bit confusing. But if you follow with me, left to right, in 2019, in our ESL program, we had 659 students, so students with 12 or more hours of instruction. The state requires us to do pre and post tests on all of our ESL and high school students. So of those 659 students, only 37% had what we call a paired score, pre and a post test. And of those students that had those paired scores, 127 showed growth. They moved up a level, a performance level on the cost assessment. So only 19% of our 659 students were showing growth. And of those ones that had the paired scores, only 51% were showing growth. When you jump down to the bottom line, which is current year data up through February, again, total students lower at 441, but we see an increase in students with paired scores by February. And of those ones that had a paired score, 136 showed growth, which means 34% of the total number of students have shown growth. And again, of those ones with paired scores, we're already at 54% of those students moving up a performance level or more. And again, this is from February. And so we've had another four or five weeks of instruction and then we'll have another five weeks of instruction after spring break. And we're hitting the portion of the year where we do the majority of our assessing. So I feel very confident that these numbers will continue to grow. Next slide, please. You know, I appreciate the fact that so many trustees come to our graduations and so I don't think any of these numbers will necessarily be a surprise. In 1920, we had 54 students receive their high school diploma or equivalency. Last year, we had 81 students. So far through February, 47 students have received their diploma or equivalency. There were 37 students at the graduation in December, 10 were completed between December and February. And we're going to be very close to hitting our goal of 100 graduates this year between the high school diploma and high school equivalency program. There's a lot of testing that's happening right now. We've got a lot of students right on the verge of receiving their diploma. And so we feel very confident that we're going to be near or at that 100 students this year. Next slide, please. Our biggest growth area clearly has been in the CTE program. I shared with you the pathways, the eight pathways. The thing that is important to know is that within those eight pathways, we offer 27 different courses. And of those 27 different courses, 20 of them are new in the last three years. You have approved a lot of courses for us during this period and students are filling them and they're learning new trades, new skills. You know, we're, I think, doing exactly what we're expected to do. And so I'm pleased with that growth. Next slide, please. One more on CTE. This is just a graph, the orange being the current year. So through February, a number of completers within these departments. So you can see in our building constructions, we were trending in the positive direction. Our CNA program has been very strong and will continue to be strong. We've currently had, we're projecting that we'll have 69 graduates this year. Instructional assistant program went through a bit of revamping and has had, we should have 25 graduates this year. Office assistant program, very flat, and we're working on a reconfiguration right now. We started the trades program this year and we had classes in the fall and the spring and we expect to have over 100 completers in those trade classes this year. Next slide, please. They're telling the rest of the story here in our counseling department. In 2018, we had a half-time counselor. Right now, we have a full-time counselor and two technicians. Adult reentry students require a lot of support and intervention and planning. And as we, as I showed you in those student learning objectives, the first piece there is to create a plan and that is happening again and again and again. And we have the staff to support that. Matt Eustace came to us from Vintage this last year and he's been a real treasure. Can't say enough about the hard work that he's done. Slide, please. And lastly, Community Pro Suite, which is the communication system. By next fall, the program should be fully robust and will be communicating with all of our partners across the county, Career Point, the Ed Foundation, the college, the Family Resource Centers, both here in town and in Calistoga, St. Helena High School, Calistoga High School, high schools here in NVUSD. We have our first training with counselors on the 20th, Camille Creek, and then of course us. Last slide. You've made it. So any questions for me? Because I'm the last person, maybe I can get a question if people aren't ready to head home. So I, hopefully I didn't go too very long, oh, 20 minutes. Monica said 20 minutes max. You could tell her that it was 1959.
Thank you very much, Principal Jordan. We appreciate your time. On behalf of the board, we would like to thank each school that presented this evening. We appreciate the time and care you dedicated to showcasing your schools. Tonight was a celebration of each school's distinct identity, their students, faculty, staff, and of course, administration. It has been said over and over, but it bears repeating. The last two years have presented a myriad of challenges and you all have rose to the occasion. You should take great pride in how you continue to provide welcoming, supportive, stable, and innovative learning environments for our children. We extend our shared appreciation to each of you and thank you for sharing a few chapters of your continuing stories with us. It is wonderful to see each of your schools through your lens. The sharing of student experience was both grounding and humbling. It is a very real reminder of how hard you work and how successful you are. Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.
And so thank you on behalf of all of us again. And our last order of business is adjourned. First by trustee Grasso. Oh, I have to make a motion to adjourn or adjourned. Do you want anybody? Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.